Good evening, I'd like to call order the Thousand Oaks City Council Meeting for Tuesday, May 27th, 2014. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, and after the Pledge of Allegiance, go ahead and stand. After the Pledge of Allegiance, I'd like everybody to remain standing for a moment of silence. I'm sure we're all aware of the tragic events that occurred last week in Santa Barbara. It hit close to home here in Thousand Oaks. Many of you know, a Westlake family lost their daughter Veronica Weiss, graduate of Westlake High School, water polo player, was one of the tragedies in Santa Barbara. And so, we're going to remain standing for a moment of silence for the Weiss family, and for all the families that lost loved ones on that day. Ready, begin? Ms. Lawrence, could you call the roll for tonight's meeting, please?
Councilmember Bill De La Peña?
Present.
Councilmember Irwin?
Here.
Councilmember Price?
Here.
Mayor Pro Tim Adam?
Here.
Mayor Fox?
Here.
Item four is request for continuance, or any additions to the public hearing items. Do we have any items? Council like, okay. We'll move to item five, that's special presentations, and give me a moment while I move down to the podium. Come on up, kids. Tonight, we begin our special presentations with one of my most favorite, because I had something to do with it many, many years ago. We are doing the presentation for the Educational and Caneo Open Space Foundation Trail Advisory Committee for the Open Space. I want to introduce Julia Osborne, the past president of Caneo Open Space Foundation. Julia's, along with many others, been very active in CAUSTAC, in maintaining her open space, the Trail Education Days, and she's going to tell you about this great program. Julia?
Good evening, City Council. Mayor Fox. Trail Education Days was started in 1992, and today, all the Caneo Valley students in the Unified School District are invited to participate, that is, all the fifth graders. We've had 35,000 to 40,000 students participate in this program to date. This year, we had 1,350 in 2014. We had 90 volunteers volunteer their time for this program, and this program is conducted and presented without any taxpayer funds, it's all privately raised. The program consists of a hike led by a trained docent, and the children then attend workshops in the Nature Center area of Wildwood Park. They learn about animals and plants that they might encounter in our open space. They have a presentation by various rangers as to what ranger duties are, and what rangers do in their job. They then have an interactive skit, which they learn about the do's and don'ts in our open space, and how to use our trails safely and courteously. I think that the council members have been given copies of the prize-winning essays, and I think you'll agree that the children learned an immense amount on this program, and they also had a great time as well. I'd like to now present the grand prize winners. Jessica, would you, Jessica Catersen?
Nice job.
And Jessica is from Lang Ranch Elementary School. I next have Brooks Holloway.
Congratulations, nice job.
And Brooke is also from Lang Ranch Elementary School. And finally, Capono de Cascos.
Thank you.
And Noah and Capono are from Westlake Hills Elementary. I'd also like to give a special thanks to Sherry Burke, their teacher. She had three grand prize winners in her class, and has been very supportive of our, oh, excuse me, sorry, Brittany Niall, and Brittany is also from Westlake Hills Elementary. But I do want to acknowledge their teacher, Sherry Burke. Sherry, would you stand up? She has three grand prize winners in her one class, so I think she should be given a hand.
So Julia, how many total essays this year?
We've had 775.
And who's reading them now?
A retired teacher, some of our volunteers.
Oh, I know I'm not, so that's good. All right. You guys want pictures with the kids? Yeah, all right. (inaudible) All right, we transmission from Trail Education to Transportation. As many in the community are aware, the 101-23 interchange construction project is well underway, and we had committed to the community to give updates from time to time. And we have the Caltrans Community Liaison Officer, Marissa Campos, is here this evening, and Marissa is going to give us an update on the construction project. Marissa?
Thank you, Mayor Fox, members of the council. I'm here tonight to provide an update on the 101-23 interchange improvement project. And the last time I spoke with you, we were awaiting a schedule for the bridge demolition activity at Hampshire Road, Caneo School Road, and Moore Park Road. I am happy to report that that schedule was finalized late last week, and the contractor plans to begin their work next week, which is the week of June 2nd. A quick overview for everyone. In order to accommodate the widening of the 101 freeway, crews must demolish and widen a portion of the over crossings at Hampshire, Moore Park, and Caneo School Roads, and that's actually on the northbound side of those over crossings only. So that's where folks will see work taking place. During demolition activity, these streets will be closed to all through traffic at the 101 freeway. On and off ramps at these interchanges will remain open, but there will be no access underneath the freeway. Work at Hampshire Road and Caneo School Road will be during the daytime, and at Moore Park Road, the demolition activity will actually be completed at night. So to jump into the schedule quickly here, work is scheduled to begin first at Hampshire Road, that will be Monday, June 2nd, and Tuesday, June 3rd, from 9:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m., and that is the window within which the contractor can close Hampshire Road to all through traffic. Caneo School Road will be, work will begin at Caneo School Road on Wednesday, June 4th, and that will take place from 7:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. And finally, the contractor will begin work at Moore Park Road Thursday, June 5th, and Friday, June 6th, between 9:00 p.m. and 6:00 a.m. Detour maps for each of these closures are posted on the project website, and they're available for folks to print out or download, you can pull them up on your smartphone. And the website again for everyone is t-oaks.org/10123. Changeable message signs have been placed at Hampshire Road and Caneo School Road, those are the first two closures that we'll run into next week. The contractor will be placing a changeable message sign at Moore Park Road likely tomorrow. The city's also going to be installing banners along the roadway with the project website, so folks can't miss it, and that's just another resource that we're providing if anybody's caught off guard by the closures next week. We've sent out an e-blast to the more than 1,200 subscribers on the email database that we've established. We're working closely with our emergency services partners, including police and fire, to make them aware of the closures, because we realize they have planning to do in advance of that work. An alert has also gone out via Nixol, and the city will be promoting the closures and additional information on Facebook and Twitter this week, so I encourage everybody to look and check those out. At this time, I'd be happy to answer any questions the council might have about the work.
Any questions for Ms. Campos? Ms. Bill De La Peña?
Thank you for the presentation or the update. I have already spotted the signs warning us of the impending closures. The other question I had was the news that was recently reported, that there has been an increase in the number of accidents, jumped by 34% over last year, that was reported by the CHP. And it's, in my opinion, not scientifically proven, but in my opinion, due to the construction, because last year, there was no construction, now we have construction, and the accident rate is up 34%, and I have seen several banged up cars myself. What is the CHP doing, I mean, what is Caltrans doing to address that?
Certainly. Well, I can't speak on behalf of Caltrans, but as a liaison for the city, you know, I've been attending construction meetings with the project engineers, with the technical team, and as well with Caltrans Public Information Team. So, they have been made aware of the report that was recently released, and they're exploring all sorts of options to first see what the cause of these accidents is. Is it unclear signage, not enough signage, too much signage? You know, and we're really competing for driver's attention nowadays, so a good reminder to folks to be aware when you're driving, especially through a construction area, never a bad idea to slow down a little bit, don't use your cellphone when you're in the car. So, we have encouraged the project team to explore signage, look at what additional signage might be useful in the area, and also look at the staging of the project, and see if work can be completed maybe at nighttime, or just off-peak hours, to decrease the incident of accidents, but I don't know the exact cause at this time, but the project team is aware and exploring the issue.
Thank you for that. I think additional signage would probably help, but that's just, again, my opinion, so, and, yeah.
Absolutely. Can't hurt.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Ms. Campos? All right, thanks for the update, we'll see you.
Mr. Mayor?
Oh, sorry, Mr. Price.
Were we going to hear from Mr. Spurgeon on this?
We can.
Could we? I think he had some additional information.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and council. The uptick in accidents has been documented, as pointed out by council member. One of the things that we think is a contributing factor is when the lane closures were first initiated, both on the southbound 23 ramp to the southbound 101, as well as the northbound to northbound ramp. And initially, when those were done, you recall, the contractor and Caltrans had not done a good job of getting the signage out there. Since that initial closure of the lane on southbound to southbound, those, of course, have been reopened, and then the northbound to northbound additional signage was put in, and we believe that has helped the situation there. But as Ms. Campos has said, we're continuing to work with contractor and Caltrans and the CHP for additional enforcement and additional signage where appropriate, so just thought I'd add that in as well.
Thank you, just quickly, just, I think five days ago, there was a six-car pileup that was reported about five days ago, and then the following day, I saw three cars parked on the shoulder on the connector to the 23 that had, that were fender benders, just FYI, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Any other questions? All right, very good. Finally, our final presentation this evening is going to be from our Cultural Affairs Director, Mr. Barry McCombe. Barry is going to announce the exciting 2014-2015 theater season. Mr. McCombe?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. It actually is my extreme pleasure tonight to present to you a sneak preview of not only our next season, but the 20th anniversary season for the Civic Arts Plaza, and it's a season which we've branded as a bold new season. As you're aware, many of the shows that are presented at the Civic Arts Plaza are put on by our Thousand Oaks Civic Arts Plaza Foundation. Starting this year, we're going to brand those shows under the banner of CAP Presents, so as you see ads in the paper, posters, and you see this logo, that means that it's actually a show that was brought here as an in-house presentation through the Civic Arts Plaza Foundation. Starting off our season this year, on January, or July 3rd, rather, we have Kenny Loggins coming. Kenny is returning by popular demand, and what that basically means is that he received a lot of votes in the survey we did a little over a year ago, asking people what artists they wanted to see come back in our anniversary season. With Kenny, our special guests are the Blue Sky Riders. That's a brand-new band that started in 2012, and has a musician as one of the members named Kenny Loggins. So what that means is Kenny Loggins will be opening for Kenny Loggins when he's here in early July. Moving on, we're also launching an emerging artist series here in the Sheer Forum, where we're going to present new and exciting artists as they're gaining popularity. The first artist in that series is Mary Lambert, Mary hails from Seattle, and some of you may know her from the Grammy Awards, where she closed the Grammy Awards this year with Madonna, and is also known for being part of the Macklemore and Ryan Lewis's big hit song, Same Love. We are one of only two engagements she'll be doing in California this year, the other being in San Francisco. Next up is the start of our new singer-songwriter series, which is featuring Mary Chapin Carpenter. Mary, early in her career, was branded as a country artist, and won a Grammy for the Best Female Country Vocal Performance, but today, she's better described as a mix of country, folk, and soft rock. Opening for Mary will be Tiff Merritt, who hails from North Carolina, and is very reminiscent of Joni Mitchell. A concert we're very excited about is country music sensation Sarah Evans, she's probably one of the bigger names we'll have this year. This is actually also the start of a new partnership we're entering into with Niederlander Concerts. They have a number of venues they book in Southern California, we're now going to be one of those venues, and when they do shows here, it will be in partnership with the foundation. The benefit from this partnership is, obviously, it's going to help us bring bigger names to our venue here, and compete a little better with the Los Angeles market. Next up, just in time for the election, is the Capital Steps. Capital Steps is a political satire group that, when it was originally formed, consisted exclusively of congressional staffers. Today, they have a professional troupe that travels around the country. Last time we had them here was two years ago, before the last election, they came close to selling out on a Monday night, so having them on a Thursday night, just before the election, I think, will guarantee a sold-out house for us. The following night, we're bringing The Four Tops, probably one of Motown's most-defining vocal groups, with a slew of hits from the '60s through the '70s. Last year, The Temptations proved to be a very popular attraction for us, so we thought we needed to follow them up with The Four Tops this year. They will then be followed with Air Supply, I'm sure all of you are very familiar with the Australian soft-rock duo, who's had eight top-10 hits to their career, and promises a night of kind of walking down memory lane with all their hits. Our next emerging artist here in the Sheer is on November 8th, that is Justin Young. Justin is actually a singer-songwriter who hails from Hawaii, and now calls Westlake home. Some people may know him as Kobe Calais, guitar player, but Justin is, actually formed a very successful career in his own. We've had him open for a couple of artists here over the last couple of years, and at intermission, there were more people in the lobby buying his CDs than there were the artists that he opened up for. A booking we're very excited about on November 29th, which is the Saturday of Thanksgiving weekend, is The Tenors, which is a platinum-selling classical-pop vocal quartet, they were previously known as The Canadian Tenors, and if you're a fan of PBS, you'll certainly be aware of who this group is. Moving into Christmas time in December, we're very happy to welcome another local resident back, Brooke White, who also lives in the area. Many of you will know Brooke as a finalist in the seventh season of American Idol. She called us last year, wanted to know what it would take to do a Christmas concert here in her hometown, and I think in about three weeks' time, we sold her out, so she's coming back this year with an all-new show. Her special guest will be Michael Johns, who also competed on American Idol with her, and then she's also bringing in a holiday bell choir, who will join her on a number of songs. Our next partnership with Niederlander takes place on December 29th, and that's Straight Note Chaser. Straight Note Chaser is probably the most popular a cappella group that is performing today, they have over 17 million followers on YouTube, and this is an artist that we've actually been trying to get here for quite a long time. As we move into the beginning of the new year, we bring back A Taste of Country with Travis Tritt, who will bring over two decades of country hits on January 29th. Moving into February, we're presenting Jim Brickman. Jim Brickman is a songwriter and pianist of pop and adult contemporary music, he's earned six gold and platinum records, and is known for not only his solo piano compositions, but also vocal collaborations with artists such as Johnny Mathis, Michael W. Smith, Martina McBride, Olivia Newton-John, to name just a few. He's actually had more hits than any other male contemporary artist. Following up on February 13th, we're presenting The Midtown Men. The Midtown Men actually features four of the original stars of The Jersey Boys, and that includes Christian Hoff, who won a Tony Award for his appearance in The Jersey Boys, and they'll be presenting an evening, taking you back into the hits of the '60s from The Beatles, Beach Boys, Motown, Four Seasons. When we were back at the National Booking Conference in New York in January this year, we had a chance to see them perform, and it's a terrific show. Moving on with our singer-songwriter series, on February 20th, we're bringing Suzanne Vega. Suzanne Vega is known for her kind of eclectic, folk-inspired music, her career spans several decades, and she's probably best known for her hits Luca and Tom's Diner. Bringing back another emerging artist on February 28th, Leftover Cuties hails from Los Angeles. Their music is really kind of a blend of timeless jazz with contemporary pop vocals. If you're a fan of The Big C, which appeared on Showtime, their music was used throughout that show, and their most recent singles are receiving lots of national coverage through many of the music industry's top music publications. One of our presentations we're extremely excited about is Joffrey Ballet. Joffrey is one of those ballet companies we're lucky to get maybe once every 10 years. They typically would play Los Angeles, but they're coming to Thousand Oaks this year, and bypassing Los Angeles. So they will be here on Wednesday, March 11th, and this, to me, would be one of the have-to-see performances in the coming season. Following Joffrey, the last of our singer-songwriter series for the season, when we bring Roseanne Cash on March 20th. Roseanne is just an incredible performer. This particular show is part storytelling, and she's going to talk about the struggles and growing up in the shadow of Johnny Cash. It's got a multimedia element to it, she'll be showing some rare video footage, as well as her music. I had a chance to see her two years ago in New York, she played in front of an audience of 1,000 presenters such as myself, and had a 10-minute standing ovation when she finished her performance that evening, which says a lot about her talent. Kathleen Madigan is one of the comedians we're bringing back by popular demand, I'll tell you that she came in number two on the list of respondents that we had in our city survey, the number one will be coming up in just a couple of minutes, so Kathleen will be here on March 21st. Our last of our emerging artist series actually also features another homegrown band called Quattro. Quattro's roots are from the New West Symphony, their music is a blend of Latin jazz and classical music, they released their first album last year, and received a Grammy nomination on their first release, so we're excited to have them back. And then to complete the season of CAP performances is Paula Poundstone. If you're a fan of NPR, you'll know her from White White Don't Tell Me. She typically would be playing in the large theater, but when we were negotiating with her agent, and she heard we had a smaller venue, she wanted to come and play in a more intimate surroundings, so she'll be here on May 2nd. Quickly looking at some of our other additional programming highlights, the number one most-requested comedian was Bill Cosby, and Bill Cosby will be here on September 28th, he's being presented by Live Nation. As we move into our resident companies, Cabrillo has an excellent season next year. Two of my favorites that I'm looking forward to are Memphis and Mary Poppins, which, if I'm not mistaken, they will be the first regional musical theater company in Southern California to present Mary Poppins. New West Symphony also has a terrific lineup next season, the one that I think most people are excited to see is Sean Chen, who will be here on February 28th, also a homegrown talent, used to play with the T.O. Phil, and is now an emerging concert pianist who's playing with symphonies throughout the world. Pacific Festival Ballet comes back with Kaleidoscope in August, their annual nutcracker performance, the only nutcracker where it actually snows in the audience, and then their Storybook Ballet next May will be Cinderella. Distinguished Speakers has a great lineup next year, I think two of the more notable ones, one is Gabby Giffords with her husband astronaut Mark Kelly, and then Magic Johnson, which we like to say is probably worth more than when they actually booked him to be part of the series with all the recent attention that he's gotten. Theater League is bringing four shows in next year, Beauty and the Beast will be returning at Christmas time, and we're all looking forward to Chicago returning in April together with Camelot and Buddy Holly. And that completes the look at the season, I think we had a little bit of an issue with this projecting on the home television screen, I'll just say that the season will officially be announced on June 7th, so when you go to our website on June 7th, all the details regarding these shows will be there, and on June 14th, all the tickets will go on public sale at our box office at 12:00 noon. I just encourage people to sign up for our newsletter, because this is just a piece of our season, there's many other offerings, and we still have offers out to a variety of other artists that hopefully we'll be confirming over the next few months. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. McCombe. Very exciting lineup. Nice job. All right, that moves to item six, public comment. Madam Clerk, could you call public comment for tonight's meeting, please?
This is the time and place for public comments, a speaker card is available for those wishing to address the City Council regarding items on the agenda or in a subject within the city's jurisdiction. Speakers for public hearing items shall be called and heard during the public hearing. All remarks should be addressed to the council as a whole, and all documents for City Council and the official record should be presented to the city clerk prior to speaking. Speakers are requested to state their name and community of residence for the record. Under state law, public comment matters may not be considered by the council unless listed on the agenda, but may be referred to the city manager for administrative follow-up. Five people have presented cards and pursuant to council standards, speakers are allowed three minutes, the yellow light displays when you have one minute remaining.
Thank you, Ms. Lawrence. When I call the names, if you're the on-deck speaker, go ahead and make your way up, and you can sit in the chair right behind.
This is the time and place for public comments. A speaker card is available for those wishing to address the City Council regarding items on the agenda or in a subject within the city's jurisdiction. Speakers for public hearing items shall be called and heard during the public hearing. All remarks should be addressed to the council as a whole, and all documents for City Council and the official record should be presented to the city clerk prior to speaking. Speakers are requested to state their name and community of residence for the record. Under state law, public comment matters may not be considered by the council unless listed on the agenda, but may be referred to the city manager for administrative follow-up. Five people have presented cards and pursuant to council standards, speakers are allowed three minutes. The yellow light displays when you have one minute remaining.
Thank you, Ms. Lawrence. When I call the names, if you're the on-deck speaker, go ahead and make your way up, and you can sit in the chair right behind the podium, and I'll move nice and smoothly. Our first speaker would be Wendy Edwards. Following Ms. Edwards will be Brian Bimmel. Good evening.
Good evening, council members. I'm Wendy Edwards. I'm a resident of Thousand Oaks. I'd like to state my opposition to the assisted living facility proposed by Hunter Development at 250 McLeod Avenue. I bought my unit at Oakno Villas directly across the street seven years ago. The primary reasons I bought it were because of the gorgeous views from my windows and balcony, of the open space with heritage oaks and other natural vegetation, as well as the peace and quiet of the neighborhood. If the proposed building is allowed to go through, my current view of the natural hillside will be completely eliminated and replaced with a view of a massive man-made structure with bright blue awnings. I feel several city resolutions, signed by some of the members sitting before me today, would be violated should this development proceed. I have those with me. Resolution number 79-270, Section 5, quote, "All applications for development involving grading and construction adjacent to streets and highways, as well as the improvement thereof, shall provide evidence by line of site profiles that the scenic vistas have not been obstructed by placement of walls, houses, grading activity, or any other man-made obstacle." I've seen the proposed drawing, there's no hillside showing behind it. Resolution number 2005-011, Section 3B, on-site design objectives, number four, quote, "Maintain public scenic corridors." Section 4A, under desirable elements, quote, "Earth-tone muted colors." Blue awnings are not muted colors. Section 4B, under undesirable elements, bright primary colors. Section 4D, number four, quote, "Building heights should be related to adjacent open spaces, protect and enhance public views of surrounding mountains, and minimize obstruction of view from adjoining structures." I just retired March 1st, and for the last seven years, I've been looking forward to spending a lot more leisure time sitting on my balcony, enjoying the peace and quiet of the scenic open landscape. If this development goes through, I will lose both my view and the peace and quiet, which will be replaced with noise from traffic, construction, and sirens 24/7. Had the proposed Hunter Development been in place seven years ago, I never would have purchased my condo here. If I should ever want to sell my condo, I would lose one of the greatest selling features I currently have. In addition, I would lose property value after just about regaining it after the economic downturn of 2009. While I am not opposed to anyone making a profit, I feel to allow Hunter Development to profit by violating existing regulations, which the City Council wrote, "To protect citizens' wildlife and nature would be hypocritical, irresponsible, and morally irreprehensible." So I would greatly appreciate it if someone on this council could help me to understand how proceeding with this development is not in direct violation of, to the resolutions approved by the City Council to protect our natural landscape. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Edwards. Next speaker will be Brian Bimmel, followed by Susan Triestey. Good evening, sir.
Good evening, members of the council, Mr. Mayor. My name is Brian Bimmel. I'm the artistic director for Performances to Grow On. I'm a retired teacher with 22 years in the classroom and 12 years as the performing arts specialist for the county. My passion in the arts led me to form a nonprofit group called Performances to Grow On. We've been at the Civic Arts Plaza since the plaza opened 20 years ago, and we present many things, but my greatest, I think our greatest accomplishment are all the performances we bring to the community for students in Thousand Oaks. Usually when I'm here at the share forum, it's filled with kids. This is the first time I've been here at a council meeting. Last year, over 6,000 students came to shows that were Chapter 1 students. These are disadvantaged kids. They could not come to see shows without the help of many groups like the Friends of the Civic Arts Plaza and the Alliance for the Arts and other foundations. This year, I found out that the Alliance for the Arts is changing its direction, and they probably are not going to be funding our Title I student program. And so I'm here tonight to speak on behalf of my organization, but also I'm speaking on behalf of all the schools that have come with the help of the Alliance, and I'm just concerned that our organization is really going to be impacted by this, and more importantly, many kids who have come in the past won't be able to come anymore to see many of the nationally acclaimed performances that our organization brings. So I just came tonight, I just wanted you to be aware of what is going to go on, and especially in this time of educational cutbacks, and especially in the arts, the only way that students can see performances like this is with the help of many organizations like the Alliance. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Susan, looks like Triestey? Okay. And then Kay Sikra. And then our last speaker will be Nick Kidway. Good evening.
Good evening. My name is Susan Triest. Can't see a thing. Wait a minute, please. I'd like to begin by saying that I am in no way opposed to assisted living homes. I lived in Atria for an entire year while recovering from a stroke. I went in confined to a wheelchair, and thanks to its loving staff and my time there, I am standing here tonight. That being said, I am very much opposed to any changes in Thousand Oaks Renewables Code regarding the zoning or granting of a special-use permit for an assisted-living facility to be built at 250 McLeod Avenue. The proposed enormously-sized structure, 80,000 square feet, is not appropriate for a residential neighborhood on a little two-lane street, which also happens to be a dedicated scenic highway. The project will disrupt wildlife, destroy protected oak trees, mutilate the knolls, and ruin the serene beauty of the open space. It will also drastically increase the amount of traffic, clogging it with ambulance sirens, fire truck horns, transport ferrets, delivery trucks, and the delivery trucks for these places are not little pickup trucks, they're semis, bringing food and supplies, along with the 80 employees entering and leaving in three separate shifts 24/7. And assisted living facilities are on lockdown at night, and if they have a memory ward, which this one plans to have during the day for half of it, and somebody is always tripping an alarm, letting or setting off the deafening alarm system, while people run around trying to find where it's open. Of course, the evacuation for the underground parking alone will create chaos, with all the heavy-duty construction equipment spilling dirt and dust and rocks all over the place, rendering the air unbreathable and undermining the integrity of the mountain. The Thousand Oaks general plan is supposed to protect us from this sort of irresponsible development. The city should not change the zoning or issue a special-use permit to accommodate this project. An assisted living home is a business. I can certainly attest to that, and as a business, it needs to be elsewhere. Please do not let it be built on McLeod Avenue.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you for your time.
Our next speaker is Kay Sikra. Sikra, okay. And our final speaker would be Mr. Nick Kidway. Good evening.
Hello, I'm Kay Sikra. I live in Thousand Oaks. Mohammed Asa, the developer who wanted to change the zoning in our neighborhood on Hillcrest Drive, is angry with my neighborhood. He has made it no secret. He has even made angry and untrue statements to the Acorn about our neighborhood. Several of my neighbors have expressed their concern for me, because I have replied to his comments in the paper and exposed some of his lies. Some of my neighbors and my family have actually said they're afraid I'm going to be murdered. And some of my neighbors have told me they don't want me to speak anymore because they're afraid that the city will get angry with me and allow Mr. Asa to build his high-density projects right next to our homes after all. But I am not fearful, so I'm here again. I just thought you should know that some people are fearful, and that's not good, but I guess that's what happens when developers feel overly entitled to inappropriate zone changes. Last week, I ran across an old Acorn article from August 20th, 2009, entitled "Input Sought From Residents on Proposed Mixed-Use Plan." The article discussed the draft of the specific plan proposal for Thousand Oaks Boulevard. In that article was a statement that says, quote, "There are two mobile home parks in the specific plan that the specific plan draft describes as sizable areas of undeveloped land." The article goes on to say, "Over time, these parcels may represent opportunities for market-driven intensification consistent with contemporary demand and land values." Nowhere was it mentioned that people happened to live there. Nowhere was it mentioned that the city had any intentions of helping those people who might happen to be in the way. Fast forward to now, and we know that elderly and disabled residents of Ranch Mobile Home Park are having difficulty paying for food and medications because their rents were unfairly raised around the same time the specific plan was adopted. There are young courageous men in our country who are willing to fight and die for what is right, but in our proud city of Thousand Oaks, we have city leaders who have been fighting disclosure for four years. Just what is it that the city is so scared for us to know? What is so important that it has been worth letting 15 seniors die so far while waiting for justice? For more information, please Google Senior Alliance for Empowerment. The acronym is SAFE. The site has been updated since the last city meeting. When good people are too scared to do anything, evil can flourish. Thank you.
Our final speaker is Nick Kidway. Kidway, good evening, and we also have a written statement card by Rita Etchenverry.
I begin in the name of God, who is most beneficial, most merciful. My name is Nick Igbal Kidway. Last time I checked, still director of Concerned Citizens of Thousand Oaks. Here on a somber night, I was lucky enough to take some time off from work at 4:00 and watch the ceremony at UCSB. It was really moving. Ivy is one of my most favorite places in Southern California, I guess, next to Thousand Oaks, and whenever I'm in Santa Barbara, I try to have lunch or just drive around. Makes me feel younger. Believe it or not, when I came in the country in July '71, I had three roommates and we shared one car. I don't remember the month, I'm going to be meeting my roommates this weekend, and in February, I believe, of '72, my roommate bought Volkswagen Bug. And one of our friends had moved to UCSB, and at 7:00 in the evening, we said, "Let's visit him." So at 7:00 from Fullerton, we went to Ivy. Got there about midnight, I think, something like that, spent the whole night. I don't drink. The others were drinking and all that, having a good time, and then at 6:00, we went back. And one of the things that I used to do, we used to do, was stop at Wendy's at the McDonald's. That has not changed. So why not me? Ivy, Delhi, I've tried to make some money there. I've been there at least four times, not recently, but a few years back. That's where Mr. Martin's son was brutally killed. If TOTV can show the overhead, not everything is bad about this. There are heroes. This young man, I have it here, what's his name, 7-Eleven clerk, he put himself, Mr. Jorge Anaya, in harm's way, ran out and picked up a girl and saved her life. Read the manuscript. It's 137 pages. It's better than reading novels. Mental health is a big issue. What can we do about this? I thought after Newtown, after Gabby, we would have taken care of this issue. Some crazy person can come over here and, I don't know, how many would he get, take care of? We should not be living in that. Let the people have the guns. The loophole in this that I see is that if somebody is going for therapy, their name should be on a list, and NSA has gotten the names of everybody in our emails. Why is it that the sheriff, when he is going to a person's home, cannot have access to it and see who has bought guns recently? Why not? Beat the NRA and not one more. That's the chant. Send the postcards to people, talk to Ms. Irvin, she wants higher office, and ask her what she's going to do about it.
Thank you, Mr. Kidway. We do have a written statement card from Rita Etchenverry. She's opposed to the assisted living facility on McLeod. That's read into the record. Item seven is our consent calendar. Any items council would like to call special? Ms. Build a Opinion.
7H, please.
7A? That's 7A and H, or just H?
H as in horse.
Okay, thank you. Any others? All right, who wants to move the balance of the consent calendar? Mr. Price?
I will move the balance of the consent calendar.
Mr. Price moves. Any discussion? Vote, please.
Motion carries 5-0.
That is approved. Item 7H. Ms. Build a Opinion.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good evening. I think I have all the experts here now.
We're all full, yep.
Very good. The reason I pulled 7H is because it deals with upgrading our acoustic system of the Fred Cavali Theater, and that has always been a goal and an issue, to be honest, for a number of years. There were numbers thrown about in the past, it would cost upward of $1 million, if not more, to upgrade the system. First, I wanted to know, was this, did this go through Capitol Facilities, because it didn't go through the Attahack Arts Cultural Commission? And secondly, how comfortable are you or confident are you that this bid, which I thought was on the low side to improve our acoustic system, will in fact do the job?
To answer your first question, it did go through the City Council Capital Facilities Committee. This project was actually budgeted in next year's capital budget, but we're moving forward with it this year so we can have it installed before the beginning of the 20th anniversary season. As far as the cost of the project, you know, when the $1 million figure was bantered about, you know, that was at a time when the specifications for what we really needed were probably unknown. We went through a very extensive process researching what the venue needed. Actually, I believe it was back in January. We had what's called a sound-off, where we brought in three different audio companies who hung their speakers in the theater. We invited professionals from the industry, people who are sound mixers with national touring artists, as well as sound engineers that work with some of our local companies, such as Cabrillo, and we spent almost an entire day listening to tests of these systems in the theater, going and standing in the very back of the balcony, in the boxes on the side to ensure what system was going to deliver the best for us. And that's really how we came up with the specifications for the acoustic system, which is what is proposed. It coming in under budget, I think that's just a benefit. The cost of components is maybe going down as technology moves forward. I can tell you that the theater I came from, just by happenstance, also has an acoustic system. That was a historic vaudeville theater. When that system was put in, we had, at Los Angeles time, critics write about how improved the sound was, and I think you'll experience the same result when it's here, just in the simple test we did, sitting in the boxes, which are some of the worst locations right now, particularly for spoken-word performances, with very little tune- right now, particularly for spoken word performances, with very little tuning of the systems for the hall, the sound was 100% better.
Well, that's good to hear. And just for the audience's sakes, basically, is why did you reach a decision to hire this particular company?
Actually, I'm going to defer to Michael Tetchco and Jonathan Saret, who are our technical directors for our two theaters, and we're very involved in making that decision.
Thank you. Thank you, Barry. After having gone through the shootout process, after having listened to all the different systems, we had a sense going in precisely what the system that we needed was going to need to do technically within the room. When we requested proposals, we got three excellent proposals in return. The one we chose is from a company in Camarillo. Part of, one of the reasons why we, one of the great advantages to that company is their ability to be close, responsive, take care of emergencies if and when they should arise as quickly as possible without causing any production delay. That was a, the actual costs all came in very close to one another. So they were all competitive and they were all within the same range, but we were proud to be able to choose a Ventura County company.
And how long will the installation take?
Probably no more than about a week, once we have everything in place. Part of the installation is a separate project, and we're still in the process of planning that right now. But we had originally projected anywhere from three to five days for the Cavali Theater and just a couple of days here for the Forum.
Okay, very good. Which is the first show that will benefit from this improved acoustics system?
Let's see, going into the new season in the Cavali, I have to think back through our schedule. Now, here in the share, it will actually be the Mary Lambert Concert, which is to kick off our emerging artist series. Probably the first national music attraction that will benefit from it would be Mary Chapin-Carpenter in early October. We have a number of performances with comedy artists in September, but I think the first national music artist is Mary Chapin-Carpenter.
Very good. Thank you. I move item 7H.
All right, we actually have a speaker card on this, and so I apologize. Stephanie Wilson? Sorry about that, Steph.
Thank you, Mayor Fox, members of the City Council, and very hard-working staff. I'm here to speak on behalf of my support for the new sound system. As you just saw, the performances that Barry just listed, these are world-class performances. In 1994, in October, these theaters opened. In January of 1995, my students, about 36 of them, performed right here on this stage, our town. They were the first students to perform theater in these theaters. And I know how the sound system is. We were just here in May, well, this month, and they made it sound as good as they could. They do a great job. But they do need help, and the sound systems are aging. And so for us to come up to this level of great professionalism, I'm strongly in support of this. I also want to say one small thing about, council's intent to avoid spending general funds on the theaters is admirable. That was the intention when the theaters were built, but I feel like it's a little bit outdated. When the theaters were built, our tax revenues grew, and since the theaters were built in the first 10 years, my house tripled in value. And I think that's because of the theaters and everything that was built here. I think the theaters are moneymakers, not just for the people performing here, but for our city. So I think that the revenue to the city and its residents, in both dollars and quality of life, is much more than the balance of any funds that we're going to spend. And when you look at how many times Barry said homegrown talent, without these theaters, what would have inspired that homegrown talent? So please, I hope that you fix our sound systems, make their lives just a little bit easier, and allow world-class talent to come here and say, "Okay, we can be here." Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Wilson. All right, Ms. Bill Olipina.
All right, I move 7H.
Ms. Bill Olipina, move 7H. Discussion under motion. Hearing none. Vote, please.
Motion carries 5-0.
That is approved. We're going to move to item 8. That's the Committee Commission and Board Reports. Excuse me. Nope. Got a little ahead of myself there. Item 8A, that's the Ad Hoc City Council Theaters Fund Budget Review Committee Recommendations. Mr. McComb is going to provide the staff report, but let me just begin some introductory comments. I know there are some people here that Mr. Adam and I have had the pleasure of spending many months with over the last several months in meetings. As council will recall, there was essentially a mandate that council provided to the committee made up of Mr. Adam and myself. We had the opportunity to meet with certainly the Alliance for the Arts, Cabrillo Music Theater, New West Symphony, and the school district, primarily to discuss the issues of finance for the theaters. And I just want to say at the outset how pleased both Mr. Adam and I are with the, really the tone and the nature of the conversations that we had. I've learned over the years that change at a rate folks can absorb is really the best balance that you can strike in dealing with public policy. And I think we were able to do that. And we were able to do that really because of the cooperation and the support candidly of the groups and the folks that we talked to. I also want to thank the staff, primarily Mr. McComb, for the really outstanding job of your interaction with the various groups and the just really strong staff work, both you and Mr. Powers provided, as well as Ms. Noonan to the committee. And then finally, I want to thank Mr. Adam. What a great partner. He was a first opportunity, actually, work with Al in a committee setting, difficult work, and he brought a lot of value to the committee. So Al, very much appreciate your leadership on that area. Did you have any comments? Just introductory comments?
I just said I concur with what you're saying, and I really appreciate working with our nonprofits. I feel like it was a collaborative effort, a collaborative effort to get the theaters on a secure footing, and I look forward to success for all of you in the future. And I do appreciate your leadership on the committee, Mayor Fox. And I think we have a good report from Mr. McComb tonight.
Thank you. So with that, I will turn it over to Mr. McComb, and he will present the findings of the committee report and recommendations.
Thank you very much. Mr. Mayor, members of the council, it is my pleasure to present tonight the financial plan that was developed by the Theaters Fund Budget Review Committee, and I'm glad to see that the PowerPoint is working. So, moving forward, first, just a little bit of background. The Theaters Fund operates as what's called an enterprise fund, and what that basically means is that it functions like a business by charging fees to users in order to be self-supporting. The enterprise fund for the theaters is not required a subsidy from the general fund for operational expenses since fiscal year 2007-08. However, beginning in fiscal year 2009-10, it has had to draw down from its reserve funds to cover operating expenses, and we'll talk a little bit about why that is. The chart that you see in front of you reflects in 2007-08, when user fees were increased to balance the theaters fund at that time. An unfortunate consequence of that was that the Cultural Affairs Department had to provide user fee discounts and waivers and other financial support to our rental customers in order to make the theaters affordable for the nonprofit community organizations. These discounts have run as high as $575,000 and have resulted, over the years, in a gradual drawdown from the theaters fund reserves, which you can see by the green graph line there. As this chart reflects, the remaining balance of the theaters unrestricted reserves was depleted in the first quarter of this fiscal year. So in June of 2012, staff saw this trend was taking place and presented an update to City Council at that time, which addressed the operating deficit that the theater was facing and being forced to draw from the reserves to cover. The report really detailed that the losses were due primarily to these user fee discounts and waivers, and stated that if something wasn't done, that eventually it would require general fund support through the city. So as a result of that report, City Council adopted several recommendations, one being to begin to phase out all user fee discounts and waivers that were being extended to rental customers, with the exception of the resident arts organizations and the Canaho School District for their all-district music festival. We also revised our user fees to maximize revenue. The main change that happened there was we increased fees for a Friday through Sunday, which is the most sought-after days, and we decreased fees from Monday through Thursday to try to promote more use of the underutilized weekdays. And then finally, we also established a booking procedure guidelines, which provided us a mechanism to free up dates on the theater's calendar to be able to accept more profitable bookings, such as tours by national artists. So at the City Council Goal Setting Study Session in March of 2013, we looked at the revenue model for performing arts centers. So in the graph that you see in front of you here, the first pie represents the national model, and the other pie represents the theaters fund model. You'll see through the theaters fund that we rely much more heavily on programming income, and that's primarily, in our case, rental income from chargebacks to people that come to use the theaters. On a national level, a portion of that would most likely also include ticket sales for performances being presented in-house. Because we present our performances through the foundation, which is separate from the city, that's not really part of the 84% that you see there. So when you look at this model, the real missing components from the theaters fund model is really appropriate levels of contributed income and earned income derived from the sale of sponsorships, onsite advertising, and concessions. So to address the imbalance that we were facing, staff met with City Council's Finance Audit Committee and the Cultural Arts Review Committee after the operating budget study session in May of 2013. And while both of these committees recognized the operating challenge that we had with the business model we're operating under, they were in agreement that as an enterprise fund, that we should avoid operating without direct general fund support. So this resulted in the formation of the Ad Hoc Theaters Fund Budget Review Committee, and that committee was given a mandate by City Council to formulate strategies to achieve a balanced theaters fund budget by no later than June 2016. So the committee, during its initial meetings, determined that in order to achieve a balanced budget, several strategies needed to be implemented. Those strategies included increasing levels of contributed income, eliminating all ongoing user fee waivers and discounts, and attracting more profitable events, such as performances by popular headline artists, as well as maximizing sources of ancillary revenue. And what we'll do at this time is to start to walk you through the components of the Theaters Fund Financial Plan. So obviously, a principal component of our ability to balance the theaters fund budget was and is the renegotiation of the funding agreement between the city and the Alliance for the Arts. The Alliance is the official fundraising arm of the Civic Arts Plaza and works very closely with the city through a very unique public-private partnership. Currently, the Alliance contributes $300,000 a year to the theaters fund, as well as an additional $200,000 each year to the resident arts organizations, which, of course, are Cabrillo Music Theater, New West Symphony, and the Pacific Festival Ballet. Of our $300,000 that we have been receiving each year, we have been responsible to allocate $90,000 of that amount of money to fund theater performance credits, which are smaller grants that are given to a number of community organizations that use the theater. So in approaching our discussions with the Alliance, the goal of the committee was to increase the Alliance's annual contribution to the theaters fund. So there's a number of recommendations that the committee is asking City Council to approve. These all have been obviously discussed with the Alliance and in quite a bit of detail with their board, and they are in agreement moving forward with these points. The first is a two-year extension of the current funding agreement, which would run from July 1, 2014, to June 30, 2016. There is an attachment, which is the letter agreement for that extension. Effective with the next fiscal year, all administrative and financial responsibility for the theater's performance credits would return to the Alliance. Any future funding of the resident arts organizations will be provided through that program, and the Alliance shall have sole authority in determining the annual levels of funding for that program. Next, the Alliance will continue to provide an annual contribution of $300,000 to the theaters fund, as well as fund any delta required after the contribution from the Thousand Oaks Civic Auditorium Forum Theater Endowment Fund, which is held by the Ventura Community Foundation. In fiscal year 2014-15, the Cultural Affairs Department may request an additional distribution on top of that $300,000 from the endowment fund, as may be required to balance the theaters fund budget. Moving on to the next fiscal year of 2015-16, the Cultural Affairs Department may request an additional contribution of up to $200,000 directly from the Alliance, as may be required to balance the theaters fund budget at that time. The city will continue to provide the Alliance with discounted office space in the Civic Arts Plaza for the term of the extended agreement. And probably, finally, but almost most importantly, the city and the Alliance shall jointly form a committee comprised of City Council members, members of the Alliance Board of Directors, as well as key staff from both the city and the Alliance to engage in an ongoing discussion about developing short- and long-term strategies and objectives for the Alliance for the Arts and our partnership with them, as well as for the future operation of the theater. An additional item you're being asked to approve tonight, kind of looking forward in anticipation that the Alliance would be taking over the theater performance credits, we've revised the application for the Community Events Endowment Fund grants, which is included in your packet. And the main difference with that is that it no longer contains information on the theater performance credit program, and we've also extended the deadline period to June 19th for people to apply for CEF grants. So the next topic that the committee looked at was addressing the discounts and waivers. A portion of the $330,000 that existed after we were able to reduce the amount from $575 with some of the initial items that we put into place in 2012, a portion of the remaining $330 is actually rental customers not paying the facility fee that we charge in consignment tickets. That's actually been addressed this year with revisions to the agreements that we've entered into them, and that should be reflected in our end-of-year financial balance. But with that aside, there were still over $250,000 in user fee discounts and waivers that were continuing to be provided to our resident arts organizations, the Schools Foundation, as well as the TOCAP Foundation. So the committee's goal in approaching these discussions was to eliminate all user fee discounts and waivers. So again, there's a number of items that they're looking to ask you to approve. The first is, as of July 1, 2014, all of our resident arts organizations shall pay the rental rates as established by the resident arts organization policy. That policy actually gives them a 35% discount off of our base rental rates that other customers pay. All resident arts organizations will also pay all appropriate facility fees and consignment and subscription tickets. In addition, the city will continue to provide the resident arts organizations with discounted office space here in the Civic Arts Plaza, as long as those organizations maintain their resident company status. This is maybe a little more involved and affects Cabrillo. In the next two fiscal years, Cabrillo will present three productions of two weeks each in the Fred Cavali Theater, and will present one production of up to three weeks in the Share Forum. If you look at their schedule for next year, they've already adopted this as they're moving forward with their new schedule. Then, beginning in 2016-17, Cabrillo will be limited to present two productions in the large theater and up to two productions in the small theater. The main reason behind this is to try to open up the calendar so we can bring in some, you know, more profitable productions, but at the same time, put them in a position with their productions here in the Share Forum, which could actually prove more profitable for them because of the much lower costs that are here. So next year's a bit of an experiment for them. They'll be They'll be presenting company here in January, and based on how well that does here, we'll determine how they'll move forward after that with the mix of their productions. New West Symphony will be responsible for funding its Meet the Artist series in the Share Forum as of July 1, 2014. So, we financed that for the last year this year, and I know they're looking at options for next year. The Keneho Schools Foundation has developed a planned underwrite user fee discounts that it receives as we're moving forward currently. That has equaled $80,000 a year. For the current fiscal year we're in right now, they've agreed to contribute $25,000, which they've already done, based on their recent run of all district music festival concerts. Next fiscal year, that will increase to $50,000, and in the fiscal year following that in 2014-15, that will increase to $80,000. After that, all parking fees and facility fees will continue to be waived for their patrons, as long as the Schools Foundation continues to reimburse the theaters for that lost income. So ancillary revenue, as the cost of operating performing arts centers like the Civic Arts Plaza continues to increase, venues across the country are continuing to turn more increasingly to ancillary revenue for additional sources of income. That revenue is really derived from non-ticketed sources, so it includes revenue from things like sponsorships, onsite advertising, marketing services that might be billed back to people who are using the theater equipment rental, and concessions and catering. As already mentioned, this is an increasingly important component for venues such as the Civic Arts Plaza, so the committee's goal was for us to increase our revenue through these sources. So I'm going to walk you through a few of the ideas. First of all is box office service fees. The reason that they exist is to help cover the cost of support staff, operating phone rooms, online sales, technology needs, really just to cover the general operating expenses of running a box office. Currently, patrons are able to avoid paying any sort of service fee by purchasing tickets directly through the Civic Arts Plaza box office. For years, that's been kind of the standard of the industry. However, window sales are actually the most intensive sales that we do because they take the longest. People want to spend a lot of time exploring all their options, seeing exactly where they're going to seat, and that's the purpose of that face-to-face transaction, but it does cost more for us to process. So what's happening now is a growing number of venues across the country are starting to charge a minimal processing fee for window sales. And in the report that you have, there's actually a list of buildings from throughout the country as examples of venues that are charging such a charge, and those venues, the processing fee that they have implemented ranges between $1 and $4 per ticket. To give, kind of put it in perspective, the Civic Arts Plaza box office sells approximately 110,000 tickets through our window each year. It's been more than that in the past, and as attendance starts to increase again, that will increase. So the recommendation of the committee is to implement a $2 per ticket processing fee for all tickets sold through the box office window effective July 1. That is still significantly less expensive than what it would cost you if you were to purchase a ticket through Ticketmaster by phone or online. The other note I'll just say here, too, is our contract with Ticketmaster expires in about a year, July 1 of 2015. We'll be starting a process to look at alternative ticketing solutions this fall, and we'll look to have a choice made at some point around the first of the year, so that we know six months in advance. Depending on how that process goes, that could wind up putting us in a position to have more input into the cost of processing fees. So, next up is concessions and catering. You may remember that the TOCAP Foundation assumed control of concessions operations back in September 2012, when our long-term concessionaire opted not to renew their contract. The Foundation does not currently pay a commission to the theaters from concession sales, and that was done because of the startup costs that were incurred by the Foundation, including the purchase of the liquor license. The Foundation is projected to generate a $75,000 annual profit from its concessions operation by 2015-16, and the current agreement with the city expires on June 30, 2015. So with that in mind, the committee is recommending that the TOCAP Foundation begin to pay the theaters fund a commission equal to 10% of gross sales effective July 1, 2015, when the new contract would be started. Next is facility fees. There is a $4 facility fee that is applied to all paid tickets. Facility fees in most venues are typically put into a side restricted account to fund maintenance and capital improvements. Here, because of the challenges that the theaters fund has faced, that money actually goes directly to support operations. But it's our goal, is once we get the theaters fund balanced, to be able to use that money and start to build up a reserve fund to turn to. Next time, we need carpeting to be replaced in the theater. The one thing that we've become aware of, however, is that some of our rental customers are pulling complimentary tickets to avoid paying the facility fee on consignment tickets. Consignment ticket is where they'll take a batch of tickets and typically sell those to their other sources. It might be a dance school that's selling them to parents, and when they take them as free tickets, then they're not assessed the $4 fee. In the last fiscal year of 2012-13, the box office issued almost 57,000 complimentary tickets, which did not have a facility fee attached to them. So, the committee is asking City Council to direct staff to develop a policy which will establish limits to the number of complimentary tickets that are exempt from the facility fee, as well as establish a minimum facility fee for non-ticketed events. There are many times free events here, a facility fee is really meant to help cover the impact of patrons, that patrons have on the theater, the wear and tear. So a free event has as much wear and tear on the theater as a ticketed event does. Could also be something like a business meeting. Then we have onsite advertising. The FY 2014-15 Capital Improvements Program budget includes funding to purchase and install electronic poster cases throughout the campus of the Civic Arts Plaza. The little picture that's in this PowerPoint shows three of our current poster cases out by, next to the box office. They can only showcase three events, and there are paper posters that are put in place. The electronic poster cases will be revolving images, and just in two cases there, we could showcase as many as 20 shows rotating between the cases. So what it does is it's going to allow us to showcase the offerings of all of our rental users in multiple locations throughout the Civic Arts Plaza complex and help bring more attention to the variety of shows that we have here. The poster cases, because of the ability to showcase multiple images, also provide an opportunity for us to sell advertising to local restaurants or other businesses that want to reach our patrons here, which have disposable income to spend. So, the committee's recommendation is that City Council direct staff to explore the feasibility of selling onsite advertising for display in these electronic poster cases, and to prepare a request for proposals to solicit sale proposals from outside independent advertising representatives who would sell those ads on our behalf. So now I'd like to move into programming, which is obviously a key component. Looking back to 2011, City Council established a priority for us to enhance the variety of programming at the Civic Arts Plaza with more contemporary artists. Hopefully, with the season that we announced earlier this evening, we are starting to accomplish that. Because at that time, Live Nation and AG were not consistently presenting shows here, the Foundation stepped in to assume responsibility for presenting those types of attractions. The downside is those types of artists carry significant elevated financial risk. When you get it right with them, you don't make a lot of money, the artist is the one that makes most of the money, but when you get it wrong, there can be a substantial loss attached to it. However, for the theaters, those types of attractions can be highly profitable because of the large numbers that they draw, the increased concession money, the increased parking fees, the increased facility fees that are generated off of them. So, to address the elevated financial risk, City Council approved a share revenue deal terms program, which allows the Foundation, when it presents shows and it doesn't do quite as well, to pay a portion of rent or not pay rent to keep some of the ticket surcharges or other soft costs, such as a portion of the facility fees. When you look at promoters such as Live Nation or Niederlander, who operate their own venues, they count on that revenue to be able to break even on those types of shows, because the margins are so thin when you're working with artists at that level. However, we have to be honest, that the waiver of those fees does contribute to the theaters' fund deficit, so we need to find a way to reduce our reliance on that. But I emphasize again that despite the waivers, the theater still walks away with profits on those shows because of the other revenue sources that they benefit from. So, one way for us to bring in additional revenue for the Foundation's shows is through event sponsorships. Right now, the Foundation operates strictly on revenue from the sale of tickets. But sponsorships are cash or in-kind fees paid by corporations or businesses who want to attach their brand to a specific artist or performance. They are a very significant source of income for promoters such as the Foundation. In discussions with a company that sells sponsorships, they work with a similar-sized venue down in Orange County to the Civic Arts Plaza, which brings in $500,000 a year in sponsorship revenue. So, we're basically asking the Council to direct the Foundation to move forward and explore sources of ancillary revenue, such as sponsorship sales and advertising in the brochures and programs that it does. As a side note, with the sponsorships, I will tell you that the Foundation Board has already voted to do sponsorship sales. We've also committed to work very closely with the Alliance for the Arts, so that when appropriate, we'll be approaching businesses, corporations, together, rather than competing against each other. So that brings us on to marketing. The one thing that really was very apparent in all of our discussions, a very common theme, was that the Alliance and resident companies and many of our rental users really want more marketing assistance from the Cultural Affairs Department. You know, we always track attendance, but in reality, we really have little impact on the attendance at the theaters when most of the shows are not shows that we're presenting ourselves, so we don't really have input in the marketing and the way that that's being approached. But we believe that a more coordinated marketing effort can lead to not only increased attendance at performances, but that will then lead to additional revenue for the theaters fund through all the revenue sources that we benefit from, as well as more successful fundraising efforts by the Alliance, as we're able to build a better brand for the theater. So, one of the ways that we can cut down in expenses and maybe increase the reach of our season brochure is by selling advertising in the season brochure. It's not something that's being done by other theaters, so we might be a little groundbreaking here, but we currently distribute our season brochure twice a year to over 280,000 households, so it reaches pretty wide, about a 25-mile radius. But it costs us about $100,000 a year, and printing costs are going up, design fees are going up, and the only way to still keep a brochure out there twice a year will be to find other ways to fund it. So the committee is asking you to direct the Cultural Affairs Department to explore options to underwrite a portion or all of the costs of producing the Civic Arts Plaza brochures through the inclusion of advertising. The one way that we can help our rental users, though, as already mentioned, is by providing more marketing support. There's a lot more entertainment options out there now that are competing for people's time, and there's also a more complex array of marketing channels that we have to use. You can no longer stick a couple of ads in a newspaper or on radio and expect that it's going to draw people. We're in the digital marketing age, and we really need to focus our efforts there. Our current marketing staff consists of one person. Our new marketing director started last October, and I think she's already done some amazing things moving us in the right direction, but an additional staff member will allow us to provide marketing services to customers, in some cases for a fee, in other cases just on a consulting basis. So, we're asking, the committee's asking City Council to direct staff to explore options to add a digital and social media marketing position, but also to identify sources of funding to help underwrite the cost of that position. Some of those sources might be what we would charge for marketing services, so that if an out-of-town promoter comes in, which happens frequently, Jackie Ivanka last November, we did all the marketing for that show, but we didn't charge a fee for it because we didn't have an approved user fee in place to do that. So, we're finally at the end here. Looking at this graph, this shows you our projections of cost savings and new income through the recommendations contained in this plan. The lighter shaded blue that's at the top of the 2014-15 and 2015-16 graph bars actually reflects the additional $200,000 from the Alliance that we have access to if we need it. So it's there as a safety net, but not necessarily unless we need it. So we believe, the committee believes, that this is a financial plan that will move the theaters forth to have a balanced budget, hopefully ahead of the deadline that was mandated to the committee by City Council. And with that, that's the end of my report, and I'm available to answer any questions that you might have.
Thank you, Mr. McCombe. Very good report, very comprehensive. I think you covered all the points. Questions for staff? Ms. Bill LaPena.
Thank you. Good evening, again. Once, looking into the future, once we break even, and we actually start making money, and that the goal is to do more than just break even, correct?
That is correct.
To make money, is there a chance that we will go, I shouldn't say go back, but we will be able to assist some of the local artists with their performances through grants?
I mean, there's always the hope that we'll be able to revisit that down the road, but I think it's also important to recognize that where we're at right now is not just a matter of balancing the budget. We need to build up our reserve account again, because there will be fluctuations in the future, and there'll be years that we don't break even, and we'll need to have that reserve to turn back to. So, I would say, down the road, I would hope that we're back to a point where we can provide support to some of the local organizations, but I don't see that in the immediate future.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Mr. Price.
You've mentioned reserves. How robust a reserve are you looking to accumulate?
I'll defer maybe to John for that.
You know, I think, well, it's a difficult question, but I, you know, sort of referring back to slide, I think it's slide three, the theaters fund had a reserve of 1.8 million, which is about 50% of its annual operating, and it's drawn down to zero. So, you know, the reserve is just not to weather the storms of the variations, but also to build up for improvements. I think we talked earlier about the speakers that are, the whole sound system. For clarification, that is being funded by the general fund at about a cost of $700,000. So, even though the general fund hasn't contributed to the operations, it has helped in doing capital improvements. So that's the other component of building up reserves, is to be able to replace things as those costs come up. So, you know, our standard policy for the general fund is 25%, but we do have other money for capital improvements as well. So, I would say at a minimum, 15% to 25% from an operating.
Okay. Any other questions? All right, we have some speaker cards in this item. Stephanie Wilson. Following Ms. Wilson will be Carmel McGuire. And then Christopher Lawrence. Good evening, again.
Hi, Mayor Fox, members of the City Council, and hard-working staff. Last time, I forgot to say, I'm Stephanie Wilson. I'm a resident of Westlake Village. I'm also very proud to serve on the Cultural Affairs Commission, but tonight, I'm here as an independent citizen. This report is extremely thoughtful, creative, and I really acknowledge the work and effort that's gone into it. But there are a couple of things on this that I can't support. For instance, Cabrillo Music Theater going to only two productions in the Cavali. I'm not actually sure that this is the place that that should be, but I also feel like this will lose the momentum for both the audiences and their staff. While a country western artist who comes in will certainly bring in ticket buyers from around the region, those are not the people that are going to make donations to the Alliance for the Arts. The people that do that are the return patrons that keep coming back to our resident companies and our community groups, and they're what's going to fund this center for the long run. They're also what inspires those kids to become those world-class talents. So, we want to import talent from the larger stages, but we also need to preserve the few remaining local companies that we have here. My second concern is the toughest one for me to say out loud. It's about the Alliance for the Arts. I am really proud of the work that they've done, and I take no credit for it. They've done an amazing job at raising money. But I really feel that this is not the Alliance's money. It was theirs in trust. The Alliance was not, was created to have this ability to raise money by selling, naming opportunities for city-owned assets. And so I feel that that fund and those monies were raised with the promise that they were going to sustain and support the theaters and maintenance and operation, as well as everybody performing here. And when the money came into them, that's what the promise was made. And when the money came into them, that's what the promise was made, and it was made by putting names on these buildings that we all own. So I really strongly feel that instead of going into the general fund, or the fund that we're going to go into at the VCCF and take away money out of the principal, we should be looking to the Alliance for the Arts and asking them to come to the table and support that. I'm at a little bit of a loss as to why that happened, that it was no longer our money when the money at the VCCF is, but I am very, I do believe it belongs to all of us and that they're holding it in trust for us and for those donors, that they promised what they would do with that money. So thank you very much, and...
Thank you, Ms. Wilson. Our next speaker is Carmel McGuire. And then we'll have Christopher Lawrence.
Good evening.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, council, Barry. Great job. My name is Carmel McGuire, Carmel Ravello McGuire, and I've been a resident of Thousand Oaks, Westlake, for 45 years. Fellow citizens, welcome. I was brought here from New York when I was six years old. I'm only kidding. I'm a member of Cabrillo Theater for a number of reasons. First of all, I love theater. I was involved in theater on the East Coast, came out here, did the mother thing, and Cabrillo has been such a passion of mine. As a student of history, one of the first things that goes when there is turmoil in a country is theater. It's wiped out. We're in turmoil right now because of our funding, but we're going to do something about it. I don't want Cabrillo to go away. I don't want the essence and the beauty and the love and the passion that these kids show on stage to go away. Because there are rising funds for us, we put on our own fundraising recently. We're very excited about that because in two weeks, only two weeks, we raised over $50,000. Not nearly enough, but we raised it. We're getting emails from people in New York who were on this stage when they were youngsters. They're starting fundraising campaigns in New York for us. Kids in high school around here are fundraising. Does that touch your heart? I urge each and every one of you that have any love of theater to spread the word, to let them know that although Cabrillo does have financial problems, we're going to get through it. Louis and Steve and all the members of the board have been so hardworking in trying to bring this up to the level, bringing our boats up so that we float evenly. When theaters close, there's a void that's left. I don't want that to happen with Cabrillo. I want Cabrillo to be known for years ahead, way after I'm gone, that they were the people who started kids off in a professional way. We've got kids from Cabrillo that are traveling theater groups all over the place. I don't want a theater to close because of lack of funding. This is a very financially astute and successful area we live in. We're very blessed. I want the word to go out. I want people to know we're eagles, and eagles fly very, very high. They go great, great miles in the sky. And each and every one of us can be instrumental in bringing the joy, the passion, the brilliance, and the love of Cabrillo Theater to everyone in the area. Thank you for allowing me to speak.
Thank you. Christopher Lawrence, followed by Shabon Hill. And our final speaker will be Nick Kidway. Mr. Lawrence, good evening.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, Mr. McCombs, my name is Christopher Lawrence. I have some curiosity questions. Earlier tonight, I heard that on item 7H, you passed a resolution authorizing the expenditure of $500,000 for a sound system. And then later, I heard that you're encouraging a group whose sole charter was to raise funds for residential organizations to give it to the city. That sort of sounds like a nonprofit raising funds as a taxpayer, as a tax-collecting entity for a city and a governmental agency. I'm sure that your council has approved that this, that this is a legal thing that you can do. But to take funds from donors who gave it for residential performances, to give it to the city, and you're going to give $500,000 to a sound system? When you could, when you're, I mean, I'm sorry, I'm very confused by your entire financial methodology and thinking. I believe in fiscal responsibility. You should pay your bills. The theater should pay its bills, and the city should pay its bills. But I think that the solution that you've created is convoluted, and it's twisted. I think you should revisit it. I think you should spend more time on it. I think you should not take the $500,000 for a sound system and take money from donors. If you're going to take the money from the donors to take it and abscond it under an emergency invasion fund, then I think you need to go back to the donors and say, did you want to give this as a taxpayer to the city? Not as a donor to a foundation, but a taxpayer. And so when you're creating solutions, I think you need to look at this, and I think that perhaps you should take and postpone the $200,000 emergency invasion fund from the Alliance for two years. Give all the theaters a charter. Require them to raise more funds. Make it so that they have to be bigger contributors. Put the burden on them. That's fair. But to turn around and say, we're sorry, we're absconding with money that was allotted to you because we, the city, are so impoverished that we spend $150 million every year on our budget, and we can't figure out how to balance ourselves out? This is the best solution you can come up with? Really? Honestly? You're really going to say that to the citizens of Thousand Oaks? Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Shabon Hill, followed by Nick Kidway, will be our last speaker.
Good evening, Mayor, and city council members. Thanks so much. My name is Shabon Hill, and I am the director for the Alliance for the Arts. First and foremost, we just, I wanted to, I'm here today on behalf of our executive board and our board members that are here in the audience to continue to support us as we continue to grow our theater. Most importantly, we wanted to say thank you for taking the time to go through this process, the staff members, and of course Barry, for going through this process with us to ensure its continued success. And finally, I want you to know, after I listen to people today, I'm going to go back to my work after this meeting and work as hard as I can to continue to raise money and awareness for all so that we can continue to make this grow, do more. That this Thousand Oaks Civic Arts Theater is so important to so many of us, but we'll continue as long as we work together. So thank you on behalf of us.
Thank you. Thanks to everybody at the Alliance. And our last speaker is Nick Kidway.
Nick Kidway, resident of anybody Park, director of concerns of Thousand Oaks, honorable mayor, council. First, important news. Thunder is 69, 49 over the Spurs in the third quarter. Going to lose the, watch, missing the whole game today. Well, it is here. I'm not kidding. The council invasion. I'm not making it up. It's from the report on page 8A3. There's an invasion going on, folks. I said two, at two meetings ago, that Thousand Oaks was under a frontal attack on two fronts. Well, here is the third front, right here. There are too many acronyms being used to hide the facts and mislead the taxpayers. Council, if the, if TOTV can show, that is part of the green packet on the internet, but the graphics could not come, so I just wanted to show that. And council wake up and declare victory on the original false promise that no taxpayer funds would be used to run the two theaters. When these theaters were first pushed down our throat, a majority opposed them because this was a blue-collar town, and many did not want their taxes spent for performance for the, it says for the elite and out-of-towners who would not pay the taxes and enjoy. The budget bleeding has been going on since day one and was hidden in the first years, but now you can only do it so much, and it has been out in the open for five to six years. The council approach and the staff approach is a total disaster. This may provide a temporary relief in the short run, but as the sun rises every morning, this will bankrupt the theaters. $200,000 for the Amgen Bike Tour, which was mostly in Westlake Village, and the bikers stayed at the Sheraton in Agora. I mean, I could not even imagine that good council people would do that. There is $200 million of debt on the redevelopment agency. $100 million is for these buildings, and the money is being paid now from our businesses. And still, this council cannot close the budget gap. If you can see that, that is Cirito's, which was built around the same time. Their budget is about $6 million versus our $4 million here, and they subsidize it by over a million and a half. I mean, all the theaters, not in this country, but in the whole world, they are subsidized. Cirito's gives resident groups $20,000. Friends of the Arts, $550,000. In fact, one of the things that is not even being discussed over here, which can be done, where is it? Yeah, it was in the picture. You can have weddings here and bring in money. I mean, there are so many things. The program initially, okay, I'm just, my time is up? The first brochure was printed at Verizon right here in Westlake for free, and the second year, too. The novelty wore off. And just as the sun sets, I tell you, you better change the thing, subsidize the group, come up with a million dollars or a dollar amount that you will spend, and stick to it, and that would be a realistic target.
Thank you, Mr. Kidway. We have one written statement card from Eloise Cohen. She is supporting the committee recommendations, and that's that. All right, that's all the speaker cards. We can, Mr. McCombs, do you have any follow-up comments?
The one thing I'd like to respond to, and then I think Mr. Adams also has an item he'd like to respond to, and that's regarding the sound system and the funding of the sound system. That money is actually coming through the capital improvement budget, which is part of the city's general fund and is allocated specifically for capital improvements here at the Civic Arts Plaza. It's not money that's coming out of the theaters fund budget, so it's not money that would be available to otherwise fund community groups, because that's not, it's restricted in other fashions. You know, why are we spending the money? As we kind of discussed earlier, I mean, the sound system that we have in place in both theaters is 20 years old, and one of the biggest complaints that we receive on a regular basis from patrons is the poor quality of sound. There are times that it's very difficult to bring certain artists in because of the system that we have. We actually have renters who will bring in an outside PA system at great cost because they're not happy with what we have in-house. So with the number of competing venues in close proximity to us, it's imperative that we remain competitive and are able to meet the current technological needs and demands that artists and touring companies are looking for. And this system not only meets our current needs, but it will actually position us to grow into it because it's very state-of-the-art, and I can say just the prospect of it coming here has already resulted in a couple of bookings for us.
All right.
And I wanted to make a comment related to recommendation number three, and this is going to the invasion of principal. I think for clarification, the way that we had to write it was is that's the account balance with VCCF. There is no invasion of the original endowment as far as the initial contribution. That principal is based off of interest earnings over the past almost 20 years that that money has been with VCCF. So we're not invading those original donations, but the principal of the account, so I wanted to provide that clarification.
All right, thank you. Any follow-up questions for staff? Ms. Bill LaPena.
I have more of a, thank you, I have more of a philosophical question. Obviously, as was mentioned tonight already by a speaker, or perhaps to other countries, subsidize the arts. This country seems to be hesitant to do that. What happens, or have we thought out a worst-case scenario to where the resident organizations and other local groups or theater groups or arts groups really have hit rock bottom? What is the city prepared to do? Is the city prepared to step in and save the arts?
Well, I can't obviously answer on behalf of city council. I can just tell you, with the mandate to balance the theaters fund, we are not in a position to continue to provide the level of subsidy support that we have for so many It's the choice between keeping the theaters open as well, and if there's not a venue to perform in, then it's kind of a mute point.
That's true. Did we also consider the fact that many children benefit from this Title I? Children, children in general benefit from the grants given?
Again, it comes back to the catch-22. Are we concerned about the comments made by Brian Bimmel earlier this evening with performances to grow on? Absolutely. Children's programming's been a core component of who we are for many years, and we just passed our one-millionth child a matter of a couple of months ago. But when we're faced with the financial stresses that we are to, again, balance our budget and not rely on general fund support, it doesn't leave us any options.
Thank you.
Any other follow-up questions? All right, it's not a public hearing, so that's all the speaker cards. You have the recommendations in front of you. There are, I believe, six total. And I would just, just to kind of summarize for the council, we started meeting back in June of 2013. That's a year ago. Mr. Adams and I met over a 10-month period with basically all the stakeholders, many meetings. In essentially, the discussions broke down into basically three general areas. One would be the discussion with the Alliance to increase their participation with the city. The second was to talk to the resident groups in terms of the user fees. And then finally, with regard to programming, again, with the resident groups, to find that balance between meeting their needs and at the same time, opening up the theater for larger, in a sense, more profitable shows. And that's, just to distill it right down, that's basically what we were able to do. There's a 30-page report here, but in essence, that's what we've been doing for the last 10 months. We could not have got here without the folks you're looking at right there. Many of them live here in Thousand Oaks. They're all volunteers. They're obviously very passionate about what they do, but I will tell you, and I'm sure Mr. Adams would agree, they recognize the, not just the fiduciary responsibility, but this council takes very serious having a sound financial house. And we were candid about our discussions. We actually looked at many, many options that you don't see here in the report in an attempt to, you know, make it a little less, a little more palatable. At the end of the day, this is what we came up with. And as Mr. McCombs points out, we have provided council with your mandate. We have given you a clear roadmap to a, not just a balanced budget, but over time, putting money back into the reserves and making the theaters really a successful operation. So the narrative that Ms. Bill LaPena throws out is, what do we do if? We did our level best to not have to worry about that day. So with that, the desk is open for a motion or a discussion. Mr. Adams?
Well, I would like to make a comment. Number one, as far as Cabrillo Music Theater, I'm very encouraged to hear that you've raised $50,000 towards your goal. You're a very intrinsic part of this organization. You've done great work. You're an incubator for talent, upcoming talent. We've seen them perform right here in front of us. It's wonderful. And Louis, I'm encouraged, and I think you can do it. I really do. Yes, Mr. Fox said, we had a mandate by 2016 to balance the budget for this theater, and this plan does do that. Just to ground everybody, if we had done nothing, we'd be projected to be close to $500,000 in the red by 2016. So it was imperative, for the sake of the theaters, that we did something, and we were able to do it and still honor the residency status of... And we were able to do it and still honor the residency status of Cabrillo Music Theater and of New West Symphony and the Pacific Ballet, still offer the 35% discount that a resident organization deserves and gets, still provide free office space for our resident theaters, which I think is important, because they're all gathered together and they're able to relate with each other. But this will ensure the future viability of these theaters. And Mr. McComb brought up something too that's very important. We have to have a reserve in this, in the theater business. It's responsible, because of how mercurial the theater business is, that we have a backup reserve. We had 1.8 million dollars at one time in reserves. Now we have nothing, zero. And in this business, we have to have a reserve. And the third and very important point too, a lot is expected of the theaters as far as the productions that we put on. The community has said to us time and again, and the city councils agree, we want the best productions possible. And more and more of that is falling on the foundation to produce that. And the foundation, to be honest with you, is operating on a shoestring. So the expectation is bring in these great acts, but at the same time, we have barely enough money to bring in the acts that we're bringing in. So part of this plan also boosts the foundation, which I think is really important, through sponsorships, which I think we should do, through adding advertisement in the brochure, which I think is long overdue, through the social media position. Mr. McComb told me that when Big Bad Voodoo Daddy came here, they sold almost all their tickets through social media. That's something we have to do. We have to get on that. And this is, this will also ensure the long-term viability of theater. The foundation is a very important intrinsic part. So for all those reasons, I... And since I worked on the committee, I'd just like to make the comment, I'd like to see someone else perhaps make the motion. I think that would be more appropriate, but...
All right. Thank you, Mr. Adams.
Thank you.
It's a pleasure of the council. Just took us a year to get here. Mr. Price?
I will. And while this may be painful, it is painful for a number of folks, it is nevertheless a necessary event. And we do need to, as council member Adam said, this needs to make financial sense. And I think to not go along with the staff's recommendations would put us on a bad path and one that would ultimately lead to the destruction of our theater. So, and we can't have that. So with that said, I will move staff's recommendations, one through six, I believe it is.
Yes. All right. Mr. Price moves recommendations one through six. Discussion on the motion. Ms. Buildon opinion?
As Mr. Price said, this is a very painful decision. I feel very strongly that we need to keep the arts alive, and I'm sure that I speak for all the other council members here. The arts are so vital to our society, to our history, because after we're gone, all that's left is the product and the result of our, of our past performances and art. That's all that's left, really. It's evidence that our culture once existed. Having said that, obviously, theater arts, performing arts, visual arts, it can't really be, it's not really suited for a business model. But because we are dealing with taxpayer dollars, we have the fiduciary duty, as the mayor said, to make sure that we are spending the taxpayers' money wisely. And this plan, while very, very painful, hopefully will get us on the right track. Hopefully, will get us to the point where we need to be, and that is both from the reserves standpoint as well as the arts. I think that Thousand Oaks is, really embraces the arts, the residents embrace the arts, and that the residents will step up and will donate and give money where we need to give money in order to keep all of this alive. And I would encourage you not to give up, not to be disappointed. We will get through this, and I'm very hopeful that, I'm very positive that we get through this. And I think that this is a step that we need to take, so I will support the motion.
Ms. Irwin?
I'm going to support the motion too, and I think everything's been said except... I would like to, again, commend staff for all their work and the committee too. This is, this was not easy. Mr. Adams and Mr. Fox going through this effort, meeting with all the different interest groups and trying to come up with a solution that everybody could live with. So you guys did a great job.
Thanks. Just a final comment, and it's perhaps maybe the most important part of it, and that is, in our discussions with the Alliance, we agreed that we would partner with the Alliance, both the city and the Alliance, even including council involvement, in working closely over the next several months or year even, in developing a strategic vision for the future. And we are very excited about that. That was something that the Alliance talked about. We think that's an outstanding idea. And I would very much expect there'll be certainly staff involvement, but council involvement as well. Mr. Adams and I had the benefit of, you know, sitting for a number of meetings, particularly with the Alliance. And there's a lot of work that still needs to be done. So we are counting on the Alliance partnership, we're counting on good cooperation and continuing that, and being partners in this strategic vision, so to speak, for, you know, where are we going? And so that's, that was a big outcome of these discussions. And with that, I will, I will turn to Mr. Price for any final comments. All right. Hearing done. Vote, please.
The motion carries 5-0.
All right, that is approved. Nice job, everybody. With the council's permission, what I'd like to do is go to item 10, that's Department Reports 10A. That's the urgency ordinance or the interim moratorium on the tree issue. There's no objection to that. We have some cards on that. And so if there's no objection, let's take that item as well. So that would be item 10A. That's a department report. Mr. Prescott?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. This matter was directed by city council at your last meeting on May 13th, at which time the city council initiated a municipal code amendment and referred it to the planning commission for the purposes of looking at the owner-planted exemption for oak tree permits and the processing requirements for parking lot oak and landmark trees in excess of three oak trees, in excess of five landmark trees. At the same time, the council asked staff to bring back at this meeting a potential moratorium ordinance, which would basically, if adopted, prohibit staff from issuing further owner-occupied, owner-planted exemptions and processing the parking lot oak trees under administrative processing, processing when they otherwise would require a planning commission review under previous ordinances. And staff was also asked to look at other options to the moratorium. So with this report, we have brought back two ordinances for council's consideration. One is the moratorium ordinance. And if adopted, that would be effective immediately, and it would be in effect for 45 days unless extended, under state law. Following a public hearing and a further action within that 45-day period, it could be extended for another 10 and a half months, making a one-year total. And then it could be further extended for another year following another public hearing if necessary. And this would give the time for the municipal code amendment that the city council initiated May 13th to go through the process of planning commission review and recommendation and come back to city council for its final action. And that ordinance is attachment number one. Attachment number two is, is an urgency ordinance, and it's different than the moratorium ordinance, but would have generally the same effect. It would immediately change the municipal code so that the owner-planted oak trees are no longer exempt, so the staff would not be in a position to accept any applications for owner-planted exemption or grant any verifications of owner-planted status. And then also, the oak and landmark tree permits above the certain number would have to be processed through the planning commission, parking lots would have to be processed through the planning commission rather than at the staff level. And the ordinance really has two purposes. One would be to put that code change in effect for a one-year period to June 1st, 2015, and then it would automatically revert back to the existing code language, which does have the owner-planted exemption and the administrative processing for parking lot trees. During that one-year period, however, the municipal code amendment that the council initiated at the last meeting would go through the process, and if adopted, would supersede either of the two ordinances. Another matter that the council discussed in making its motion at the last meeting was the establishment of some form of committee to have some kind of a role within the processing or consideration of the amendments. And the staff is asking for some further clarification on what the council actually intended through the inclusion of that committee. And in our report, we identify a couple of possibilities. One would be that they, that would be a group of professionals and interested parties working with staff on the code amendment that the city council initiated at the last meeting before it goes to the planning commission. The second option would be that it was the intent that the council make that, the concept of such a committee, an ongoing committee, to be part of the code amendment that the planning commission would consider, whether they, and you would get a recommendation from the planning commission, whether they felt there was a need for a, an ongoing committee to perhaps review, become part of the review process for certain oak and landmark tree permit applications. So essentially, the staff is asking for direction there. So in summary, the recommendation here would be for the city council to first determine whether to adopt either the moratorium ordinance or the urgency ordinance or neither. And secondly, to provide direction regarding the suggested committee. And I'll be happy to answer questions.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Prescott. Those concise questions for staff. Mr. Adams?
Yes, thank you. I'll try to be as clear as I can on this, but I'm just, need some clarification on the wording in the recommendation. It seems to me we're dealing with a couple of multiple issues here. The first being this business of planted nursery-grown trees, whether they be oak trees or landmark trees. The ordinance says that the community development director can remove, key words here, any number of planted nursery-grown oak trees in a parking area. Or he can remove any number of planted nursery-grown landmark trees in a parking area. All right? Then it goes on to talk about, now, don't forget, these were nursery-grown trees. Then it goes on to talk about native trees. Community development director can remove three or fewer native oaks and remove five or fewer native landmark trees on a single parcel without a hearing. All right, here's what I, I'm not clear on. In the recommendation talks about that we're, we consider removal of four or more planted nursery-grown parking area oak trees and six or more planted nursery-grown parking area landmark trees. But the ordinance is giving the community development director the ability to remove any number of these nursery-grown oak and landmark trees. It's, it qualifies as far as a number goes with natives. So it seems like the wording in the recommendation is melding the two issues together into one.
If that's a question for me, I can answer...
Or, or Ms. Noonan. It seems to me it should, what we should be talking about, there's two separate issues here. Do we give the community development director the ability to remove any number of these planted nursery-grown oaks or landmarks? That's issue one. And then issue two, should the community development director have the ability to remove three or fewer native oaks or five or fewer native landmark trees? But the recommendation seems to blend the two.
Well, I think it's just the language of the code. Before the change in 2002, I think it was, that granted the administrative processing for parking, any number of parking lot nursery-grown oak or landmark trees. Prior to that, there was no distinction between nursery-grown trees and native trees. So if you had, and the three or fewer oak trees, whether they were native or nursery-grown, were processed administratively. That's always been the case. Five or fewer landmark trees, same thing. They were always processed administratively. So the language of the ordinances would just put the code back to the way it was vis-à-vis that issue in, prior to 2002, when the code was changed. So whether they were nursery-grown and planted, or whether they were native in a parking lot, it didn't matter. Three or fewer administrative, four or more planning commission.
Well...
And I think that's why it seems like they're intermingled, because they would both be treated the same.
It does seem like...
The distinction in, with the change in 2002 was if they were nursery-grown in a parking area, they could be processed administratively, no matter how many of them there were. Prior to that, three or, three or fewer was administrative, and it didn't matter whether they were native or nursery-grown in a parking area.
Yeah. But don't you think we should be dealing with the, with this business as the ordinance is written now?
If I can maybe...
Please.
If I can clarify, that if you're looking at the moratorium ordinance, well, actually, it applies to both the moratorium ordinance and the urgency ordinance. What the ordinance language does is it basically, by virtue of saying four or six, it eliminates the distinction between owner-planted and native plants and native trees. That's exactly what it does. Because prior to the changes, if you wanted to remove four oak trees or more, we didn't care whether they were native-planted or owner, you know, native or owner-planted. It required planning commission approval. So by changing the language to require four or more, it puts it on the same playing field or same level as four native oak trees or six native landmark trees. It puts it on the, it treats them identical. And for a moratorium purpose, what you wanted to do is, again, you wanted to keep things status quo. And by status quo, that means you don't want to allow people to remove oak trees or landmark trees without going through the planning commission approval because of your concern over the distinction between owner-planted and native-planted. So what the moratorium ordinance does, the language of it basically makes them identical, makes them the same.
And just to augment that, the language here is the language that existed in the code prior to the change, so that's why we're trying to go back to, let's say, 2001.
Well, I think what we talked about, the goal of the moratorium was to basically freeze these abilities until we send it to planning commission and they come up with a reasonable...
And that's what this does, and that's what this does.
But it, no, well, I'm not sure about that. It seems that this is not freezing it, but kind of rewriting it a little bit.
No, it's freezing it, because what it does is that it freezes the ability for a, an owner to administratively process the removal of four or more owner-planted oak trees or six or more owner-planted landmark trees in parking lots.
But that's not what the ordinance says right now. The ordinance is that...
It does.
Community development can remove any amount of...
Right. And now it, now it, now it, now it requires, now it requires planning commission approval and takes away the ability of the, of the community development director to process permits for any number. Now, the community development director can process up to four oak trees and up to six landmark trees, and it treats them identical to what a native oak tree. Right now, the community development director, and for years, the community development director has been able to process and administratively approve the removal of three or less native oak trees.
Right.
Right now, and for many years, the community development director has been able to administratively approve removal of five or less landmark trees.
Okay. So we're going back to the way it was before.
Yes.
And we're not going to differentiate between native or nursery-planted.
During the moratorium period.
Right. We're going back to the way it was in 2004, I think, right, John?
One.
One?
One.
2001.
Yeah, prior to 2002.
All right. I think I'm... I think I'm starting to get it now.
It's actually -- we have some speaker cards, but I think it's pretty straightforward what council's going to do. I think the work's going to be on the planning commission's part. They're going to have to take this whole piece, so. Any other questions of staff? We have some speaker cards. All right. Kay Seikra?
Yes.
Oh, Ms. Irwin, sorry.
I just want to clarify, because I know a lot of residents that we've had here at the last couple of meetings wanted the moratorium on the current Westlake project. And we just need that clarification, that that cannot be done.
That's correct. The permits have already been approved.
So this is for any other...
The moratorium is prospective. It's not retroactive. It doesn't apply to -- they already have vested rights with the permits that they've received.
There was an example in the staff report about a pending project, seven oaks within a parking area of a commercial project. What about that one?
Maybe I can address that. Just this afternoon, the applicant changed that application so that rather than removing the oaks and they were in the landscape area between the parking lot and the sidewalk, to instead of asking for removal of those trees, to ask that they be pruned, so kept and pruned.
Already worked.
So that's really, really off the table. There were other reasons for that change that are not related to this evening's events, but that just happened this afternoon.
So they want to prune them instead of remove them?
Exactly.
Just out of curiosity, were they big oaks?
Were they what?
Big trees?
Yeah, I think the tallest was 15 feet or so. Yeah.
How tall?
About 15 feet.
15 feet.
They were planted as part of the landscaping for the center there and the...
All right. All right, thank you.
All right, Ms. Seikra. Followed by, looks like Jean Edwards.
Okay. It's Kay Seikra.
Seikra, sorry about that.
And I'm from Thousand Oaks. I just wanted to make a plea for the oaks and wildlife on McLeod. The woodpeckers, there's a huge colony of woodpeckers. They're called acorn woodpeckers. And they live exclusively off of the acorns and the bugs that are in the trees. And you -- I was there taking pictures a couple of days ago. And the trees are riddled with holes, but the trees are alive. It's a healthy ecosystem. And there are a lot of woodpeckers there. Acorn woodpeckers are not endangered, although piliated woodpeckers are. And I've seen them in the area as well. But acorn woodpeckers collect the acorns and they make these holes and they put the acorns in the holes and they store their food there. And if you take those trees down, then you've just killed the trees and the woodpeckers, a whole colony. And I just think how ironic that these projects to help seniors sometimes hurt other seniors who happen to be in the way. And a project to beautify Thousand Oaks actually destroyed its beauty. How awful that the main ones who really, really benefited were developers and city council members who received maximum campaign contributions from them. And I know who you are, because I went and I looked. I went to McLeod to take pictures of the oaks and the enormous colony of acorn woodpeckers that live there. I was surrounded by peace, tranquility, and beautiful sounds of nature. A man walked by and commented about the oaks. He said, "Beautiful, aren't they?" And I replied, "Yes, they are." And I told him what was about to happen. I showed him the holes in the trunks and explained that the oaks would most likely be destroyed rather than moved. The man was so upset, he immediately called his wife to tell her what I'd just told him. But he is not here tonight. I assume he is just too old to fight. Or maybe he doesn't think he can win. The developers, I know from experience, they come in and they make you feel like it's a done deal. They make you feel like there's nothing you can do. And when you see campaign contributions to our city leaders from those very developers, you feel pretty devastated. Maybe he's afraid that what happened to the seniors at Ranch Mobile Home, maybe something similar to that might happen to him if he opens his mouth and speaks. Thank you.
Thank you. Jean Edwards. Following Ms. Edwards will be Yvonne Brockwell. Good evening.
My name is actually Joan Edwards. Sorry, I didn't write it very clearly on my card. Good evening, council members. I'm here tonight because I hope you will reinstate a tree committee. That's number one of importance to me. Dave Mortner, the arborist in the Acorn, had a wonderful column about -- and let us know that we used to have a tree committee here in Thousand Oaks. Well, we need a tree committee, because all this gibberish about three and four and ah, none of our trees are expendable. And to call them parking lot trees, it just sounds like we're calling them trash trees. Low-life trees, expendable trees. I wish we could think of some other name for trees than parking lot trees. Okay. The thing about the Regency that's happening now is we're just waiting for them to cut down the rest of the trees. And I've called them and of course begged them not to cut down the rest of the trees, but I -- it doesn't look like they're watering the trees that are still left there, the ones that they're not going to cut down, the few that they're not going to cut down. I don't see any water ever going. So I think from the beginning of April, I think they just decided, "Well, if we can't cut them down, we'll just kill them. And then we'll have to cut them down. Ha ha, trick them." And then, of course, I am terribly much in favor of a moratorium on cutting down any trees. I drive by the Hyatt and I see them doing work there. And there's a whole line of trees, look like live oak, interior live oak trees. I don't see any valley oak trees along there, but I'm expecting any day now for them to start cutting those down. And what I'm afraid, if we don't get some sanity here, what we're going to have is people going out and putting their arms around the trees to save the trees, like the cartoon in the Acorn of the squirrels with their arms around the trees trying to save their homes. Only it's going to be people next time. So I beg you to do something. Thank you.
Thank you. Yvonne Brockwell. And following Ms. Brockwell will be Nick Kidwite will be our last speaker.
If I have these... Hi there, thank you. I'm Yvonne Brockwell from Westlake Village. And I realize the Regency's permits are in place, but I do have a few questions. In Regency Center's oak tree and landmark tree permits, there are specific instructions regarding excavation in protected zones. All excavation and construction activity within the protected zone shall be performed with the use of hand tools only and observed in progress by the applicant's oak tree preservation consultant. I've been photographing and filming work being done in the protected zone of trees without an arborist present. One of the site foremen tried to explain to me that it was a fine line, whether or not an arborist was on site and/or observing work. Could someone please verify for me whether or not an arborist needs to be present to observe work within the protected zone of these trees? And what is the definition of the encroachment permits? I've submitted footage of six, what appear to me to be encroachment permit violations, and have not received verification that I need. Does there need to be an arborist present to observe the work or not? I'm gravely concerned for the health of the remaining protected trees. Excuse me. Speaking of health, how does the city monitor the health of our indigenous oaks and landmark trees? It was explained to me that -- I have a photograph. Can I put it on here? It was explained to me that this tree was diseased deep in this well, which was filled with leaf litter and debris for over 20 years. Why aren't there a set of guidelines or best management practices for tree owners to abide by? There's hundreds of trees across the Canoe Valley being kept in substandard outdated technology, which is promoting their decline. Does the city keep track of the health of these trees, or is it simpler to let them fall into decline and then cut them down? When I asked Patrick Conway from Regency what measures would be taken to preserve the health of these two remaining trees in the wells, his response was, "Good question." Also, in our current preservation protection guidelines, there are very specific instructions in regards to tree removal. All portions of a tree shall be completely removed from the site and debris relocated to a recognized county refuse disposal site. This is to meet state and federal guidelines in regards to the harvesting of oaks without due cause. Was Regency given authorization to mill these trees? If so, where is it in their permits? I have an article here where Patrick Conway is talking about milling the trees to make furniture out of them. Some of us saw those photos, I believe. So in the past couple of months, I've spent a lot of time talking with Regency's arborists, site foremen, and managers. And the more we learn from each other, the clearer the picture becomes. The current preservation and protection guidelines are ambiguous at best. Please approve the moratorium now before we suffer any more losses.
Thank you, ma'am. Nick Kidwite.
Good evening, Mayor Nick Kidwite. I don't know if you're proud. Well, now it's 9684, so it's going to be a great Thursday night. It will be true, too. Mayor, why are there no letters in the council packet? Are the citizens unaware of the green packet information that it can -- and they don't copy from the Acorn? Or they are sending the letters to your personal addresses and you're not providing them to staff so that we all have access to them? The emergency ordinance is just a feel-good ploy, because the damage has already been done. Such barbarism does not happen every day or every week, and thank God, not every month. And I do not believe there are any similar tree gates in the pipeline. This is just another delaying tactic that just keeps adding to the cost of government, increases our taxes. I would like to read from the L.A. Times. It is bandied about to refer to the back-room dealings, secret pacts, or closed session in negotiations that shut out the public, talking about the city of Thousand Oaks. The fury erupted when neighbors drove by the corner of Lynn Road and Hillcrest Drive one morning to see a cinder block wall going up that looked like a prison wall that had long been as a cherished gateway to the community. The more they investigated, the more they found in hate. They were incensed that the city had failed to notify the neighbors of a public hearing on the development, and they were angry at the convoluted transactions that led to the sale of the parcel. Of course, this is 1993 Circuit City. And we thought we had made progress, because, and I quote, "It's a cloud over the city council's head, and it would always be," said Manny Ferrera, who led the charge against Circuit City last summer with a group called Concerned Citizens in Thousand Oaks. This is a gentleman who turned over the reins of Concerned Citizens to me, so I cannot even watch the game. But it's still a labor of love. So people think that, well, this is unusual, that this happened all of a sudden. Folks, this happens with regularity in the city. Every three months, six months, every year, once a year. But it happens. And we've changed -- I've seen new faces, beautiful-looking faces, but nobody seems to get a handle on it, because it's coming from the staff. I was in support of the changes that were brought about two years ago, but we were all led to believe that this was for the homeowners. There's Steve Watson's letter in the Acorn, which tells the same thing. But somehow, corporations are people, too, so it went over to the businesses. For God's sake, don't waste so much time. Make the changes and bring and protect the residents of this city.
Thank you, Mr. Kidwite. We have one written statement card from Lori McDenn, and she is commenting on the best management practices for maintaining and determining the health of trees. All right. That's all the speaker cards we have. Mr. Prescott, any follow-up comments?
Yeah, just a few. The first speaker talked about the project on McLeod. That project has not even been accepted for processing by the city yet, so it's not anything that's been approved or even been through the required public hearings. I think the applicant has done some outreach in the neighborhood and advised people in the area about the project. And I think you're seeing the commentary as a result of those outreach efforts by the applicant. But again, that project isn't even in the pipeline yet, so to speak. And it will -- since they're asking for a zone change, it will ultimately be the city's council's decision on the project. Regarding the Regency, they are watering the existing trees. I think there will be a substantial number of trees that they had previously received approval to remove that will be retained. At the end of the day, I have seen the watering truck myself, and we have our landscape architect who is monitoring its conditions there, particularly during the heat waves that we've had, two significant ones here in May. And he's coordinating with the project arborist to try to make sure that those trees get enough water. Regarding the use of hand tools and the presence of an arborist, the city's Oak Tree Preservation Guidelines Resolution adopted by the city council, which provides the authority for all of the entitlements issued by the city for oak tree permits and landmark tree permits, does give the director the authority to allow the use of other than hand tools, subject to a program that, the intent of which is to preserve the health and safety of the oak trees and landmark trees while work that is authorized by the permit is being done using means other than hand tools. And we have such a program in place with the Regency Centers. Most of the work there really is, that's underway right now, is in large part demolition of existing structures. A pavement will have to come up, and that is already within the protected zone of these trees. We do require the arborist to be on-site, monitoring. And I think early on, there may have been some times when that wasn't completely being followed, but we feel that it is now. It does not require the arborist to be present every moment when work is being done within the protected zone, but they do have to establish the work areas, the work protocols. Sometimes there'll be a trench dug near the periphery, and if they can see there are no roots in that area, and they can allow work outside that area while they're looking at another operation that might be affecting another oak tree on the other side of the property. So those were the only comments I had.
Any further questions? Ms. Irwin.
Actually, I didn't have further questions. I had some comments.
Okay, go ahead.
Yeah. So I'm, you know, I'm not sure, but we need a four-fifths vote for either one of the ordinances. But I don't see that the urgency ordinance is -- I mean, I wouldn't be supporting that, because basically that's changing the code right away. And I think we really have to look carefully at this. And if we're going to do it, if I'm going to support an ordinance, it would be the moratorium ordinance. So there's a couple of things that I think we should discuss. The first is, you know, we're making this big distinction between owner-planted and other oak trees. And really, what we should have been looking at, which is, I think, the big error that happened at Regency Center, is the size of the oak tree. At a certain point, those owner-planted oak trees should be treated just as any other oak trees. And then by, you know, on the other hand, if you have a naturally-planted oak tree and it's turning into, you know, it's an oak bush, we should take that into account also. So I think it's actually, you know, the 2002 ordinance and the 12 ordinance, I think they both really need to be looked at carefully about, you know, what is our intention? And I think really, we do -- we don't want to see these big oak trees cut down, whether they were owner-planted or natural-planted. So I like the idea, you know, we've... the idea, you know, this was mentioned by somebody else also, of having a citizen committee of interested people come in and help the planning commission with recommendations on what are really the restrictions that we should have on these, on the different oak trees. And should we be looking at size, which is something that we hadn't considered before. And then, Mr. Kidway mentioned also, this ordinance was passed in 2012 really to help homeowners. So, I, you know, I think maybe the council should consider exempting homeowners from this while we're going through this process because we don't want to, you know, we have no idea what kind of disruption we're causing to homeowners. And that was the group that we wanted to support in the first place. So, I'm not really ready to make a motion, but I, I mean, this is the way I'm leaning if we're going to do a moratorium to do the urgency ordinance and then to have a citizen group help give input. Because I think there's a lot of distrust from the citizens right now that, you know, that staff can give the right answer, or city council can give the right answer. But if we have some arborists in a group that are able to recommend something, and maybe they would even recommend a second committee later on to advise the planning commission when oak trees come down. So, I guess I just need to hear what the thoughts of the rest of the council are.
All right. Mr. Price.
Thank you. Some of the same comments that I was going to make. I'm very concerned about the individual homeowner's rights. And if, you know, if we never want to see an oak tree planted on private property again, I think that we should, you know, we need to tread lightly. So, I want to make sure that anything that we do takes homeowners and owner-planted trees on private property into consideration. I also think that the, any citizen panel that might be put together include, because I know that there'll be a large number of people who have been down here speaking before us over the past month or so, who will be willing to serve on that committee. But I also think that we need to have representation from, somebody from the development side, so that all sides are represented in the discussion. And I too would probably lean toward the moratorium rather than the urgency ordinance for a number of reasons. I think that there's, you know, there's a big difference between, first of all, I agree with what Councilmember Irwin is saying about the size of a tree. At some point, it makes no difference whether it's owner-planted or whether it's naturally occurring there. But, and that was certainly the case, at least with one of the trees at the Regency Center. When they get to a certain size, there is some appreciation of those trees, the shade that they provide, the habitat for the animals and all of that. So, that needs to be taken into consideration. I agree that the size of the trees, whether they are the, what some folks like to refer to as scrub oaks, although I think Mr. Mortimer corrected that in his article, all of that needs to be taken into consideration when we finally decide what we're going to do.
Okay. Ms. Bill de Pena.
Thank you. I think that my council colleagues, Mr. Price and Ms. Irwin, have hit the nail on the head because there are so many questions and concerns that need to be addressed, from the size to the age to getting citizen input, that this moratorium would buy us the time that we need in order to come up with a very thoughtful and well-thought-out ordinance. Because right now, there are so many different sections in the ordinance. It is so confusing. We also have the landmark tree ordinance, that it's very, very convoluted. Now, over the last 12 years, we have slowly made it easier to remove an oak tree in a thousand oaks, be it on commercial property or private property, meaning a homeowner's property. We've reduced the price for the fee for a permit. And lastly, in 2010, we differentiated between owner-planted and nature-planted. The 2002 ordinance with a parking lot, trees, obviously contributed to this dilemma as well. So, I think that while we don't need a permit to remove a shrub oak, certainly if a homeowner wants to remove an oak tree, they can do that. We have the permitting process in place for them to file removal of an oak tree. That is possible. It's when you want to remove more than three oak trees is where you will require planning commission approval. But as we have seen, removing oak trees can really be very bad for business. So, I don't think that commercial or property owners should be concerned about or worried about not being able to remove an oak tree. I think having the committee, citizen committee, giving the city input as to how to formulate a all-encompassing oak tree and heritage oak or heritage landmark tree ordinance would really benefit us. And I think the recommendation by Councilmember Irwin to establish a citizen committee would, is actually in hindsight now, when I thought about it afterwards, is a really good idea. And I think I would prefer the citizen committee more in formulating the new law rather than having an ad hoc committee to advise the planning commission. Simply because if we get input from regular homeowners, business owners, if we have a very good committee that will come up with ideas, I think we will have, we will end up with guidelines that will suffice for the planning commission to make decisions on the removal of oak trees. I'm fine with either a moratorium or the urgency ordinance, although I do recognize that an urgency ordinance, yes, would be, would change the law immediately, whereas the moratorium buys us time up to a year or so. And I think this is really what we need, is to have this time to give our residents and the professionals time to come up with something that we can be proud of.
All right. We in a motion. I think everybody's on the same page here. Mr. Adams.
Mr. Mayor, could I ask a question first?
Sure. Mr. Price.
In reading here, it indicates that if the moratorium ordinance were adopted, that that would also, there we go, the staff would not be able to issue any verification of owner-planted status during that moratorium period. And I just wonder whether or not that is necessary to have in there. Or is there some way to carve that out so that an owner-planted, I'm talking strictly residential. I'm not talking about a commercial application.
Well, you can, we can modify it so that the prohibition from processing these owner-verification permits, the prohibition would apply to commercial properties, industrial properties, and so forth, and allow it, these owner-verification permits to still be processed for single, you know, for homeowners of residential properties. We could do that.
Well, one of the reasons I'm so concerned-
Because right now, it's everything.
Right. One of the reasons I'm concerned about residential owner-planted trees is that these trees do get to a large size, and they do have impacts on sewage systems, water lines, sprinklers, irrigation, all of that. And I think to preclude somebody who planted a tree in their backyard, or even their front yard for that matter, from being able to remove it is overly restrictive.
So, just so I understand, are you saying that the owner-verification permit process, the moratorium ordinance, you want to prohibit processing those owner-verification permits for any, anyone other than residential homeowners?
I'm pretty sure that's what I'm saying, yes. Although, I'm talking about two different things. I'm talking about permit to remove a tree, or their ability to remove a tree, and the verification.
Right. And maybe Mr. Prescott wants to clarify, but the only thing the owner-verification permit does is they prove that it's owner-planted. After that, we have it on record that it's an owner-planted tree, and thereafter, they don't have to seek any type of permit from the city to remove the tree, trim the branches, encroach into it. It's just an owner-verification process. And after that, they just, they're kind of exempt from our oak tree ordinance. Is that correct?
Okay. That's the reason that I would want that language in there.
Yes, we could do that. I could change it to do that.
Right.
I could change it to allow residential homeowners to still be entitled to process the owner-verification permits, and then be exempt from the oak tree ordinance.
You're good?
Oh, are you good?
No.
Okay. No, I just wanted to emphasize that anyone can take out an oak tree right now. Even with this moratorium, you can still take out an oak tree, whether it's owner-planted or nature-planted. You just need to go through the permitting process. If you want to remove more than three, that you have to go to the planning commission. But you just have to show that the tree is damaging your property and present that evidence to Mr. Kearns or Mr. Prescott, and they will come to your property, to your house, to see if it's true. And if it's true, and please correct me if I'm wrong, you will be able to remove an oak tree with the moratorium the way it is presented tonight.
I think I understand that. But what is the cost of getting that permit or the verification?
Yeah, Mr. Kearns has that information. But the process would be, you know, the applicant would have to file a report from their own arborist, and then we have our, the city's arborist review the report. And if there is justification under the terms of the oak tree ordinance, then it can be approved. And Mr. Kearns has the fees.
For the verification process, there's no filing fee whatsoever. That's the same for a dead or hazardous tree removals. For the administrative process, it's $275 plus a $180 deposit. And that'd be for any work that's not exempt from the ordinance. So, the encroachment or the permitting activity or requests for removals, which aren't guarantees. They go through a list of findings we have to make in order to justify approving that removal.
And that fee has been reduced over the years. It used to be higher, and we've reduced that fee to accommodate homeowners.
Yes, we have.
Okay. Mr. Adams, you want to make a motion here?
Sure. Ms. Bill de Pena is absolutely right. You can take out an oak tree. All the moratorium would do is put us back to where we had for the last 50 years, as far as taking out an oak tree. If it's damaging your infrastructure, if it's a dangerous tree, if it's preventing you from using your property in a reasonable manner, yes, you can take out an oak tree. There's a procedure for that. The owner-planted exemption has only existed for the last four. So, I think there's ample precedent that, you know, the moratorium would allow you to take out a tree. I don't think I could support an exemption for, the only planned exemption for residents. I think it's wise that we look at both residential and commercial. It's ironic that this whole thing started with the residents' roundtable recommendation in 2004, that in fact, to help the homeowner, maybe we look at an owner-planted exemption for, you know, the private property owner that happened to have a tree in his backyard that they wanted to get rid of. But somehow, over the years, it morphed into applying to commercial projects, and unintended consequences happen, like Regency. And I think it's very important right now that we look at the entire ordinance and make it simpler to understand. Because it's very clear to me that the people of Thousand Oaks want their oak trees and landmark trees protected. And it's also very clear to me that over the last 10 years, those protections have been slowly loosened for various reasons. And I think we've seen some unintended consequences now, that it behooves us to take a breath, which I think the moratorium will allow us to do. I'm in total favor of a citizens' committee to advise the planning commission. Dave Mortimer and people like that are experts in this field. Whether or not I support a standing committee that would review all oak tree removals in the future, I don't know. I think if we can hone this law, we won't necessarily need that. But I would certainly like to see their input. So, as Mr. Fox asked, I would make a motion that we go ahead and approve the moratorium, send it to the planning commission, allow the citizens' committee to advise the planning commission and see what they come up with.
All right. Do we have sufficient language on the record that exempts the homeowners?
I would not include that in my motion, no.
What's that?
I would not include that in my motion. I would not want to exempt the homeowners. I want the owner-planted exemption to be nullified during the moratorium, to go back to the planning commission. And as Councilmember Irwin said, there's so many nuances to this. What about the size of a tree? What about the age of a tree? What about the location of a tree? And I don't think this was considered the first time around. And whether, even in a private lot, if it's a big 30-foot tree, you know, we need to look at that. So, I would make it a blanket. And as Ms. Bill de Pena said, if there's really an urgency, a tree can be taken out. If it's a danger, if it's problems with infrastructure, that kind of thing.
Okay. Just clear on what the motion is. Does staff need help specifically with the formation of the committee? Like, how that would be formed? A appointment by the council? Staff makes recommendations, brings it back, so you don't have to keep going through this?
Well, I think that unless the council wants to give direction tonight, that if this motion passes, or a motion with a similar statement that Councilmember Adams just made, we would bring back to the council a suggestion on how that committee should be composed and appointed. And I understand it to be, the motion on the floor anyway, a committee to help write the ordinance changes that are going to be going to the planning commission pursuant to the code amendment the council initiated at your last meeting.
That's sufficient.
Yeah, I think that's right. Yeah. I mean, we could use some input from some outside experts, so sure. I mean, the staff will make the recommendation, the planning commission will consider it, but let some outside independent voices chime in.
All right. Ms. Bill de Pena.
Yeah, I was thinking, the last advisory, citizens' advisory committee we had, I believe Mayor Fox, was the water rate committee, wasn't it? And maybe we can structure it the way we did it back then, when we considered tiering or tiered water rates, where I think the council chose. I don't know if you recall, but-
I remember well.
Okay, well, so, you know, I think that was the last advisory committee that we had, so we can follow that example perhaps.
Well, and I think where you're after is, there was a diverse group of individuals. And I think that's precisely what we need here.
That's right, Mayor Fox. Mr. Price was absolutely right about that. Needs to be a balanced committee.
Diverse group.
Diverse, balanced. We want to hear all viewpoints, so we can-
So, I think the model would be the water rate, how we constructed that. That would be a good model to look at. All right. Any further discussion? All right. Mr. Adams' motion is basically for a moratorium across the board on the oak tree ordinance with, again, just because there was a number of discussions, we are not calling out any residential across-the-board moratorium. Further discussion? All right. Hearing done. Vote, please.
The motion carries 5-0, and the ordinance title is an interim ordinance declaring moratorium on administrative processing of requests involving removal of four or more planted nursery-grown parking lot trees, or six or more nursery-grown landmark trees, and on issuance of any owner-planted oak tree exemption permit, and providing for its adoption as an urgency ordinance.
All right. And that is approved. All right. We're going to stand in recess for 10 minutes, then we'll reconvene.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome back. Mayor Fox was called away to duty, so I'm going to fill in from this point on. We have a public hearing next. And Ms. Lawrence, if you would announce that for us, please.
Hearing advertised as required by law is open to consider Agenda Item 9A, Proposed Fiscal Year 2014-15 Community Development Block Grant Action Plan and Transfer of Day Labor Site Coordination to General Fund for Six Months, July 1, 2014 through December 31, 2014. This public hearing was continued from April 22 and May 13, 2014. A speaker card is available for those wishing to address the city council regarding this public hearing. All documents for city council and the official city records should be presented to the city clerk prior to speaking. Speakers are requested to state their name and community of residence for the record. Three people have presented speaker cards in pursuit to council standards. The speakers are allowed- The speakers are allowed five minutes each. The yellow light displays when you have one minute remaining.
Thank you, Ms. Lawrence. And Ms. Carolyn Milton, our senior analyst, will give us our staff report. Good evening, Ms. Milton.
Good evening, Mayor Protim and council. As required by the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development, staff has scheduled this public hearing to provide a final public comment opportunity on the city's proposed use of Community Development Block Grant, or CDBG funds totaling $557,000, beginning July 1, 2014. A copy of the bound action plan was provided under separate cover for council's review, and public copies were made available at the city clerk department and also posted to the CDBG page of the city's website. The CDBG funds are proposed to be used for multifamily rehabilitation, single-family rehabilitation, and social services grants, all to predominantly benefit low-income households. Further, as of July 1, the day labor site coordination activity no longer qualifies for CDBG funding, and the staff is recommending that the council authorize the city manager to approve a new six-month contract for the activity using general funds totaling $36,000 for the period July 1 through December 31, 2014. Staff is requesting council's approval for the six recommendations listed on Page 1 of the staff report, and we are available to respond to your questions concerning this item. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Milton. Do we have questions? No questions from the council. I do have three speaker cards. One is from Jim Gilmer for questions only. Another is from Rick Schrader, who's here from Many Mansions, if council members have any questions of him. And we also have Mr. Nick Kidway, who does not appear to be here. So, with that, I don't suppose you have any responses to our speakers, since we don't have any. But do you have any else, any other thoughts to add, Ms. Milton, or any questions of Ms. Milton?
Well, I was expecting some hard questions from the council.
Well...
But I'm very happy not to have them, so thank you.
Well, if none of my fellow councilmembers have a question, I have a question or two I would like to ask. As far as the day labor site, $36,000 to keep it running for another six months, I understand the need for that. It seems to me it might not be responsible to end it abruptly. It's 36,000, and I notice that that will cut the time that will monitor the site. Is the $36,000 going to be adequate to make sure that site is run safely for the next six months?
Well, the staff has been using the same contractor out of the site for a number of years, and this, this was a bid, this number was a bid that came from the contractor, who was, who was willing to scale back some of his administrative expenses and believes that cutting the daily coordination time from six hours to four hours will still be effective.
All right.
Because over the years, some of the nuisance activities, some of the reasons why the city thought it would be beneficial for the neighborhood to confine the day labor activity to this one public green belt, that, there has been a lot more cooperation over the last few years. So it's been working very well, and we do agree that perhaps it would not be beneficial to terminate the activity abruptly, but cutting it back to four hours a day and then studying the, the activity over the next six months to see whether or not it perhaps could be sunsetted at that time, or whether we recommend, the staff recommends that it be continued. We think this would be a good transition between what has been happening there up until now and what might change in the future, depending on the need of the, of the neighborhood.
Good, good. Yeah, I'm glad to hear that, that it can still be run efficiently in four hours. And I, just a comment, I look forward to the report in six months as to, you know, whether or not we should continue. And I would also ask that staff look at, if we do decide to continue, alternative funding for the site, perhaps from a nonprofit or someone, you know, interested in this type of issue, that we try to identify some alternative funding sources. And if, if, I did have one other question, if I may. I see that Senior Alliance for Empowerment put in an application for funds, and do I understand that they in fact did get some funds?
Actually, Senior Alliance for Empowerment participated in the needs assessment for the CDBG funding that, that we do every year, and because they did submit a proposal, it's included in the action plan, so that HUD will know that this proposal was put forth. The city did consider potentially funding the request. However, it was determined perhaps that the money could be put to better use by going forward with the multifamily and the single-family rehab, and in fact, all of the, or most of the tenants that live at the Ranch Mobile Home Park, which I believe is the primary area of interest for the Senior Alliance for Empowerment, all of those residents are eligible to apply for the city's existing single-family rehabilitation program. In fact, I believe that one of the, one of the residents that was selected for potential assistance in this fiscal year, the first year that we're doing this, CDBG-funded single-family rehab program, one of those Ranch Mobile Home residents is definitely one of those people to be assisted this year.
Hmm, oh, that's good. So that would come under the single-family, very low-income, owner-occupied residential rehabilitation, $115,000?
Yes.
I see. Okay, that's good. Certainly, I can't quibble with them receiving some funds. I looked at the list of needs that they presented, and it was rather touching in the sense that none of the units needed any big repairs, you know, someone needed a water heater, someone needed, you know, their air conditioning fixed, these kind of things. I only wish that somehow, instead of awarding $10,000 to one unit, when in fact, that unit may only need $1,500 in repairs, if we could only somehow award the $10,000 so it could be distributed amongst a number of units to make these small repairs that, that so many of them seem to need. Is there, is there a way that can happen?
Well, one, one point that I would like to make is that the, all of the requests that were included in the proposal submitted to the city from the Senior Alliance, Senior Alliance for Empowerment, those are all Ranch Mobile Home residents.
Yes.
However, the city's program, the current program for a single-family rehabilitation is open to all low-income homeowners, no matter where they may reside in the city. So that was a consideration that, that the staff kept in mind. There, there is the more opportunity for low-income residents to potentially participate in the city's existing program, whereas the SAFE program would benefit only those low-income residents at Ranch Mobile Home Park.
Mm-hmm. I understand, and we have to be fair, of course. But I will say that as far as the residents of Ranch Mobile Home Park go, they would absolutely fit the definition of very low-income residential rehabilitation, so I certainly would appreciate anything that we could do to help them. Did you have a comment, Mr. Mitnick?
I mean...
Yes, sir. All right. Oh, Ms. Bill DePena?
Um, is it, is it $10,000, is it $10,000 per family or per unit, or is it up to $10,000 per unit?
It's up to $10,000 per unit.
Okay. So, right now, there's one resident in Ranch Mobile Home who will receive a grant, and, and that is the only person thus far in that park, even though, as we just heard, there are several that may need basic little things that are not that expensive. I mean, for them, it's, of course, super expensive, but in the scheme of things, $1,500 here and there could probably cover a lot.
Yes, I, I agree, but we did receive over 140 requests for assistance this year, so the staff actually performed a random drawing of names from those 140 applications that were submitted, or pre-applications, and we, we selected 10 names because we thought that was the amount that we could comfortably accommodate this, this fiscal year. And in fact, as it turns out, only six of those names are actually going to be selected because, for whatever reason, some of the names that we drew were either not eligible or for some reason or other, the homeowners decided not to participate. So if we do not spend our, our budget this year for this particular program, that money will be rolled into next year, assuming that the council approves the action plan, which has additional funding as of July 1, to do another round of these single-family rehab activities.
Yeah, I prefer that we use the money this year and not have these residents who are in dire need of, say, a water heater wait until the following year. That, to me, doesn't make really sense right now. I don't know whether we can do another lottery, or if it's too late now, but I think that perhaps we should have drawn more names, as backup names in case the other ones fell through, because for a 90-year-old person to wait until the following year may just be moot. So I, the other question I had, whatever happened to the $60,000 that we were told of last year that would become available this spring, the extra $60,000 in funding?
Yes, the $60,000 was added to the initial budget for, for the single-family rehab program. I think the, the initial allocation, because we were so limited in funding for this single-family rehab program, it was a little over $50,000, and when we added the $60,000, we came up with the current budget of about $125,000.
Thank you.
And Mr. Mitnick has a comment?
Yeah.
Oh, I beg your pardon, Mr. Price.
Yeah, I was just curious. I think you said that the, the names that you drew, that was a pre-qualified batch of names that, that you drew from?
Yes, we, we had a, an outreach campaign, including full-page ads in the Acorn over a period of a month, and we, as a result of this outreach campaign, we received over 140 pre-applications. In other words, we did not want any homeowner to go into, to incur any costs or effort before knowing whether or not they would be selected for a grant. So we, we asked people to identify themselves based on if they thought they would qualify owing to their income, if they were indeed low-income. We received 140 of these requests, and then because of our budget limitations, we, we decided to draw 10 names and to work with those homeowners to see if we could improve each of those properties based on their need. However, as it turns out, only six of those projects apparently will move forward this, this fiscal year, but we will do another round of grant applications after July 1, if the, if the CDBG action plan, as the staff has prepared it, if that is approved.
Okay, because I tend to agree with Ms. Bill DePena that waiting another year, if we have money left over and there's a need out there, I think that we should spend that money.
We can take a look at that. However, we are pretty close to the end of the fiscal year.
Mr. Mit...
Oh, Mr. Mayor, member, members of the council, or Mr. Mayor Protim, members of the council, a little reminder here on the residential rehab program. This evolved out of what used to be a redevelopment agency program, where the low and moderate-income housing funds were used on an annual basis to do the residential rehab program. And it evolved over, over time to the point where I think we, because we had an incredible administrative burden to process the applications and to make sure the applicants were eligible, so it was, I think, set at $10,000 per person or per household, and if I remember right, it was a loan, and then if the individual or family stayed there for 10 years, it became a grant. So it evolved out of that, and because of the challenges with redevelopment and how the state took that money away, what the city of Thousand Oaks did, is we then had the CDBG fund pick up this program, and that's what we have today. Now, if council would like to alter it, that's certainly your prerogative, but when, the program is up to $10,000, and I think it's treated as a grant, correct? So it's, it's not a loan anymore, it's a grant. If the desire is to make the grant smaller, which, which can be done now, because it's up to $10,000, I just caution the council, the council to be careful, because there'll be a burden on staff to monitor the, the process and to keep track of each grant that's provided. We have to fully comply with whatever HUD requirements there are, but we could certainly do that. We'd recommend that we stay the course of what we have, and then for next year, take a look at maybe lowering the amounts or spreading it across, because we do have to verify that the applicants are low-income, they're in the census, eligible tracks, and that type of thing. We certainly can do that, and the goal should be to make it available to as many low-income residents, not, not just those in a particular neighborhood or a particular project. So we can certainly do that, look at spreading it out and going with smaller dollar amounts. That absolutely can be pursued, but we do want to make sure we continue to adhere to the HUD requirements. Thank you.
Well, I, for one, like that idea. I think we get more bang for our buck. You know, the way it's written now, we have to give up to $10,000 to one unit. Where you take, and again, I use ranch as an example. I have their needs list here in front of me. I mean, here's a, here's an 88-year-old man who needs a water heater. It's 1,400 bucks. Here's a 99-year-old man who needs a furnace. It's 2,500 bucks. So I'm just saying, as Mr. Mitnick says, if we can spread it out a little bit, instead of giving 10,000, up to 10,000 to one unit, we can spread it out amongst four, five, six, seven, eight different units, I think we could help more people. So, can we incorporate that now, or do we have to, we got to wait till the next giving cycle?
Yeah. My recommendation would be you stay the course, and we can, they can take that in consideration as they go through the applications that they have for this fiscal year, but remember, staff will have to go through and verify the income of, of the applicants and where they live, and make sure they fully comply with the HUD requirements.
Okay, well, it sounds like we could apply that at the next giving cycle, if that's okay with everyone. And then if you have, do you have any other comments, Ms. Milton?
Not at all. We will, the staff will try to benefit from the, from the council's desires.
Good.
And, and your, and your direction. However, I would point out that the, the qualification process can be rather extensive, can be rather administratively lengthy, and we would have to do that, the staff would have to do that, for each and, and every grantee, whether it was, whether they were getting $1,500 or $10,000, would still have to go through a lot of that income verification and, and making sure that, as Mr. Mitnick said, that all of the grantees would be eligible to benefit.
Hmm, I see, yeah. Mr. Price?
And this is a question for staff, is whether or not we could have the Social Services Ad-Hoc Committee take a look at those and do some of that legwork. We have a robust group. I mean, not, not this year, but obviously, but is that not something that we could ask of them?
Well, in, this Social Services Committee is an ad hoc committee, and my understanding is they are formed and appointed to do just one particular task. In this case, it would be to review the Social Services funding applications. In this case, it would be to review the social services funding applications.
It seems that the council gave life to that, then we could probably give life to a new meaning for them as well, going forward. I'm just throwing it out there.
Yeah, we can look into it. My only, just off the top of my head, I just want to make sure, the federal grant program is very onerous, and I just want to make sure that we could even legally authorize non-employees or non-professionals to that, to do those background checks, and who ultimately signs the documents and forms that verifies that they are income-eligible and all that other stuff. So I'm just thinking off the top of my head. We can look into it, but it might not be, it might not be that simple.
Well, it seems to me the upside is that we could help more people. The downside is it'd just be more red tape and doing it. So, there's always a downside to everything, but I think, from what I'm hearing from the council members, is that, you know, the red tape is part of the process, and I think we would like to hear you come back with an idea on how we could spread these funds out, perhaps a little more, I don't know if the right word is equitably, but a little more, where we could get a little better bang for our buck for some individual circumstances. Ms. Bill De La Peña?
Yes, not only that, but again, just to emphasize, reemphasize, is to, we should be able to spend the money that same year, because there is enough need in our community where nobody should have to wait another year, so that is something we should definitely, definitely take into, not only take into consideration, but do with the next cycle.
All right, that's a good point. Well, let's, if I may, I'll ask for a motion to approve this report, along with the direction that the council's given, Ms. Milton, for future funding years. Ms. Bill De La Peña?
All right, I move staff recommendation of item nine, what was it?
Nine A.
Nine A, that's right, nine A, one through six, with the addition of exploration of extending, of reducing the funds and include more applicants in the process, as well as expending the funds that very same year, and not have them roll over into the next And, of course, that includes the day labor site, and I'm not a fan of expending taxpayer dollars for that, but I think this is going to be a temporary solution, it's a Band-Aid for the time being, and so I will, obviously, moving that, be moving that as well. It's part of the recommendation, staff recommendations.
And if we could add on that you'll look for alternative funding for the day labor site?
Oh, yes, alternative funding for the day labor site.
That'd be okay? Sure, okay, all right. Motion on the floor, can we vote, please?
The motion carries 4-0 with Mayor Fox absent.
Thank you, Ms. Lawrence. And, Ms. Milton, I believe we have another report from you as well, on our Social Services Committee's grant recommendations.
Yes, thank you, Mayor Pro Tem and Council. The 2014 Social Services Ad Hoc Committee met nine times between October 2013 and March 2014 to prepare recommendations for the council's award of social services grants for two consecutive years beginning July 1, 2014. The committee's chair, Margaret Ambrose, is present to provide the committee's recommendations report. However, after the committee met for the last time on March 17, the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development confirmed the amount of the city's 2014 to 2015 CDBG grant, including $83,593 for social services grants, and amount $875 less than the estimated budget used by the committee to formulate its grant recommendations. To address this issue, the staff revised the committee's recommendations to effect the required $875 budget reduction. This proposal adjusts the proposed grants to the partial funding group while leaving the committee's recommendations intact for the full funding group and for those being recommended for the minimum grant award of $3,000 each. Staff is recommending the council's approval of the revised committee recommendations, as shown in Table 1 of the staff report. Before the committee chair's presentation, I would be happy to respond to any questions about the staff's proposed revisions to the committee's recommendations. Thank you.
Thank you, Milton. Questions for Ms. Milton? All right, hearing none. I do have one written statement card from Mr. Nick Kidway, he is in favor of the committee's recommendations. Thank you, Mr. Kidway. Oh, and I also have a speaker, Ms. Ambrose, correct?
Yes.
Yes, ma'am.
Good evening.
Go right ahead, thank you.
Good evening, Mayor Pro Tem and council members. I am Margaret Ambrose, the chair of the Social Services Ad Hoc Committee, and also present are three of my cohorts, Ray Sobrino Jr., please stand, Jerry Weinstein, and Michael Teasdale. And I thank them, and there's a total of nine of us, but I thank them for their hard work on the committee. Also, if I may, Ms. Milton, Caroline Milton, and Lynn Oshida, the city staff, I'd like to commend and thank them. They did just an absolutely outstanding job, professional, responsive, and we couldn't have done it without them, so if it's okay, I just wanted to say that. Our committee was tasked with interviewing applicants for the social services grant funds, which were a little bit over $185,000. There were 30 programs that we interviewed persons for. It was an honor and a privilege to be able to see all the good work and the people that are working for nonprofits, for the less fortunate in the community. And we also, after we interviewed them, we also reviewed their applications, which were, could be quite lengthy also. So it was a lot of work. And then, what we did was we applied the priorities that we were given, there are five priorities from highest to lowest, the highest being unduplicated essential services for lower-income families. And we categorized the programs by their priorities, and we separated them, full funding, no funding, and then we did partial funding. And that was just the process that we came up with, that we thought was fair, and through deliberation and consensus, we came up with what we thought was the fairest distribution of the funds. It's very difficult, because the request for funds is much less than the funding available. So, we hope that our work assists you, and we hope that you adopt our recommendations. And if you have any questions, I'm happy to answer.
Thank you. Questions for Ms. Ambrose? All right, thank you very much for your work.
Thank you.
Oh, I beg your pardon, Mr. Price.
Yes, as always, I want to thank each of the members of your ad hoc committee. It's, I recognize that there's a lot of work, there's a lot to go through, and it's not an easy task, and I'm sure that a lot of those applications were very compelling, and you wish that you had a larger pot of money. And, you know, it's something that we rely on folks like yourselves to do year after year after year, and you do a wonderful job at it, and I want to thank you and the rest of you up there for participating in the process. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Ambrose. All righty, Ms. Milton, any follow-up comments you'd like to make?
No, I have nothing further to say, except that I hope that it was clear why the staff felt that we had to revise the committee's recommendations. It was only because after the committee met for the last time, we found that we were going to have $875 less of federal funding to contribute to the budget. Of course, the federal funding makes up a little less than half of the city's social services budget, and the remainder of the budget comes from the city's own social services endowment fund.
Thank you, Ms. Milton. All right, then, if there's no further discussion, I'd like to ask for a motion. Ms. Bill De La Peña?
Well, I wanted to comment, but I can certainly make a motion to approve the staff recommendation, but I wanted to mention to the Social Services Ad Hoc Committee that meeting nine times between the months of October and March is a lot of meetings, so in a short, in a short window or a period. So, thank you for the commitment to our community, especially those in need, or organizations, nonprofits that need our assistance, and you've been doing a very good job. It is sometimes tedious, but also fulfilling, I would imagine, so thank you for doing that, and I will move the staff recommendations of 8B, one through three.
Thank you, Ms. Bill De La Peña. Motion on the floor, please vote.
Motion carries 4-0, Mayor Fox absent.
All right, thank you very much. Now, we have a department report that has to do with who's going to be running our transportation system, and Mr. Jay Spurgeon will deliver that to us.
Mayor Pro Tem Adam and council members, this item tonight is our request for approval of a five-year agreement for transit services, for Thousand Oaks Transit, for our bus and dial-a-ride and a lease agreement. That's before you tonight. We have several folks from our present contractor, MV Transportation, with us tonight. Doug Geis is here, Southwest President with MV, WC Peel over there, and Zach D'Ameggi, and Cheryl Severt, who's our local manager, so thanks, folks, for hanging in there with us this late. Mike Hauser, our transit manager, will be providing a brief summary of this item, and then we'll be happy to answer questions.
Good evening, Mayor Pro Tem, members of the council. As mentioned, the item for you tonight is approval of a five-year contract, brief history of Thousand Oaks Transit. We're a little over three decades old as an entity of the Public Works Department. I have been providing dial-a-ride and service since 1988 for over 25 years, and since 2003, MV Transportation has been our contracted operator. Thousand Oaks Transit is the fourth-largest transit provider in this county, but by ridership, we are the largest provider of senior dial-a-ride and ADA services in the county, and in addition to services for our own community, the cities of Westlake Village, cities of Moore Park, and county of Ventura, contract with us for service as well. Our service area covers nearly 100 square miles, and our 26 vehicles combined have almost 900,000 miles driven annually, with almost 60,000 hours of service. In addition to the vehicles in service, we also have the Transportation Center and nearly 120 bus shelters and bus stops. This current fiscal year, our ridership will be approximately 160,000 passengers. Our dial-a-ride service will be approximately 85,000 passengers, plus an additional 40,000 bus passengers for the service that's provided for the city of Moore Park. The specifics of the agreement are, this is a five-year agreement with a concurrent lease of the city's Transportation Center. It will provide for the senior dial-a-ride ADA and fixed route services and commuter bus services in the city of Thousand Oaks, 11 leased vehicles that will be used to provide dial-a-ride service in addition to the city-owned dial-a-ride vehicles, as well as the services for Westlake Village, Moore Park, and the existing services for the county of Ventura. Through the process of the RFP, the request for proposals, we had three conforming proposals. Those agencies are presented for you on this slide. In terms of experience, I think an overview of the experience shows that MV Transportation is by far the most experienced of the three proposals that we had, both locally and also within the state and regionally. This was a rather large interview committee, we wanted to make sure that we've got as many varying viewpoints as possible. Excuse me, a small technical problem there. The committee consisted not only of city staff, but staff of the five largest transit agencies in the county, as well as two transit, non-transit professionals to provide another perspective. In terms of rating them on the basis of their responsiveness to the proposal, the understanding of what we wanted them to do, their qualifications and price, MV Transportation was selected as the top proposer. An overview of the pricing shows that the MV Transportation proposal cost was the lowest of the three proposals, and the combined cost for all planned services is slightly more than what the current contract price would have been, and their proposal was approximately $440,000 less than the highest proposal, which was Roadrunner. Over a five-year time period, the MV Transportation proposed cost is a little over $13 million, with Corinthian International being second at about $350,000 more, and Roadrunner being a little over $2 million more in cost over the five-year period. In addition to the actual services, the agreement also includes a market rate lease for the transportation building, share of utilities, and the opportunity to make adjustments annually due to changes in inflation. For the proposed agencies that are contracting with us, we're currently in negotiations for those contracts, and we'll be presenting those to council later in June. That will include the service for Westlake Village, services for the county of Ventura, including two new services that we don't currently provide, which is general dial-a-ride service for the Oak Park area, and the Canaan Shuttle Bus Service for Oak Park. Staff's recommendation is that you approve the five-year contract with a year-one not-to-exceed price of $2,800,000, as well as approving the lease agreement for the Transportation Center at a rate of $3,600 per month, and with that, staff is available for questions.
Thank you, Mr. Hauser. Questions for Mr. Hauser or Mr. Spurgeon? All right, I have two speaker cards. I'd like to call Doug Geis. Oh, Mr. Geis?
Good evening. Again, as Mr. Spurgeon and Mr. Hauser said, my name's Doug Geis, I am the Southwest Group President. Mr. Mayor Pro Tem, members of council, thank you very much for the opportunity to be here tonight. With me tonight is WC Peel, who's our Executive Vice President of Business Development, Cheryl Severt, who is our General Manager, and Zach D'Ameggi, who's our Operations Manager. Over the past 11 years, we've built a great relationship with the city staff, and I want to thank Mr. Spurgeon and Mr. Hauser for that partnership that we've developed with y'all. We are honored to be staff recommendation for another contract term, having proudly served the city of Thousand Oaks for these past 11 years. And in order to keep the meeting brief tonight, I'll just again say thank you for the staff recommendation you're going to consider, and WC, Cheryl, and myself would be available for any questions, should you have them. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Geis. Any questions of the speaker? All right. Mr. Hauser, Mr. Spurgeon, any further comments? All right, then I will, I will say that as far as MV goes, I think we have a pretty good combination here, most experienced and least expensive. Hard to beat it. Anyway, can I get a motion, please, on the, on the item in front of us, to approve MV?
I would move staff's recommendations, one through three, and this, I believe this is item 10B?
10B, correct. All right, thank you. Vote on that, please.
The motion carries 4-0, Councilmember Fox absent.
Thank you very much. All right. So, we don't have anything from the successor agency, and I don't believe there's any council members that have anything to give to us this evening on meetings or conferences they've attended to, so I would ask the city manager for any follow-up items and announcements he'd like to make. So I would ask the city manager for any follow-up items and announcements he'd like to make.
Mr. Mayor Protem, members of the council, by way of follow-up, during the public comments at the beginning of the meeting, we heard a few speakers who had concerns about a potential proposed development at 250 McLeod Avenue. I think the Community Development Director later in the evening did make reference to that being a concept at this point. I'd like to reiterate for the city council that that's true. There has been no application submitted to the city. It's not on the planning commission agenda, nor the city council agenda at this point. When the, the potential applicant came forward to the planning staff, though, I believe that they were advised to work with the adjacent residents before submitting a project. That may indeed be what's, what's happening, and that's why some of those residents have submitted emails, letters, and then come down tonight. So we will definitely, staff will definitely follow up with each person that spoke and make them aware of that. And for anybody who's still watching at this time, we did want to make that point clear. So the next city council meeting is on June 10, and at this point in time, looks like there'll be two public hearings. One is the, the annual wastewater liens associated with delinquent accounts that would go on the property tax rolls. We have very few of those, but we have to go through the legal process every year. And then there's a proposed ordinance to be introduced dealing with a pipeline franchise. Department reports at this point, it looks like we'll have the groundwater study consultant agreement coming forward. That's really about it at this point. The next council meeting again will be on June 10. Thank you, Mr. Mayor Protem. Oh, yeah, we do have a community visioning update scheduled for June 10. Oh, June 3. That's correct. Andrew Powers will give you the specifics.
Yes, good evening, Mayor Protem, members of the council. Just a reminder that next Tuesday evening is our third in our round of visioning sessions. On Tuesday, the 3rd of June, those sessions will be taking place throughout the community at the same locations. Anyone that's interested in finding out more information can go to t-oaks.org/20642064.
All right, thank you, Mr. Mitnick and Mr. Powers. We have two closed session items, a few to announce those for us. Ms. Noonan?
Pleased to do so. The first one is conference with legal counsel on existing litigation, Ingle versus City of Thousand Oaks, case number 56201200426914CUPO VTA pursuant to Government Code Section 54956.9A. And the second matter is conference with legal counsel for anticipated litigation, initiation of litigation pursuant to Government Code Section 54956.9C, two cases.
Thank you, Ms. Noonan. And I would like to adjourn this evening's meeting in memory of two exemplary citizens. The first is Maureen Lake Canfield. She passed away on April 4, 2014, at the age of 97. By my numbers, that means she was born in 1917. Maureen was a member of the Encino Women's Club for over 50 years, contributed much of her time and her talent to philanthropic efforts, and she also served as president in the early years. Maureen's daughter is a friend of all of ours, Darrell Reynolds. Darrell's a longtime community volunteer and a Thousand Oaks Planning Commissioner. Maureen is survived by her daughters Pat and Darrell, her brothers Boyd and John, her grandchildren Amy, Wayne, and Derek, and three great-grandchildren, Madison, Hannah, and John, and also many, many nieces and nephews. Maureen will be sorely missed, both by her family and by her many friends whom she helped and inspired. Also, I'd like to adjourn tonight's meeting in memory of Mark Davis, who passed away on January 18, 2014. Mark was a resident of Thousand Oaks since 1990. He was a loving husband, a caring father, and a famed baseball coach. Mark was a standout pitching instructor, and he gave private lessons to several generations of college, high school, and youth players. He coached numerous teams, including the 1994 Thousand Oaks Little League 13-year-old World Series championship. Mark was best known for helping his students with academic and personal challenges, as well as improving their baseball skills. Although his time with us was short, he was a positive influence in the lives of all the people whose lives he touched, and he will always be remembered for his deeds on and off the field. Mark is survived by his wife Chrissy, daughters Alexandra, Alexandria, and son Ryan, all of Thousand Oaks. God bless you both, and I will adjourn this meeting till June 10. Good evening.
Very nice, Al.